Good evening and welcome. Welcome to the November 27, 2023, regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. We have a call to order, please, a roll call.
Councilmember Bowles, here. Councilmember Beer, here. Councilmember Beckmeyer, present. Mayor Protem Vaterlos is absent. Mayor Big Stick, present.
Please make sure that if you haven't done so already, place a parking pass on your dashboard. You'll find them at the bottom of the stairs on the door. And do we have any notes to read off, city clerk?
Tonight's meeting is being held in person with alternate ways to observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom webinar link provided in the agenda or by the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda on Comcast Channel 26 or livestream at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. If calling into the webinar number, to raise your hand, press star nine. To speak on an item, press star six to unmute once called upon by the last four digits of your phone number if dialing in.
Thank you very much. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rame Toshaloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rame Toshaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rame Toshaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rame Toshaloni peoples. Have a salute to the flag led by Councilmember Bowles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we have a couple special presentations tonight, starting with one by Hip Housing about the annual calendar, which I'm always very excited about.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Hello, my name is Anita Fox and I'm a proud board member of Hip Housing. I'm here today to share something fun with you. Since 1972, Hip Housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents to fund and maintain housing in one of the most expensive places to live in the country. Hip Housing is listed in all 21 housing elements in San Mateo County, including yours, as a trusted affordable housing partner. Last year, we worked with over 3,200 individuals and housed 1,241 people throughout the county. In Pacifica alone, we received 76 inquiry calls this year. We worked with a total of 93 people helping to house 17 individuals through our home-sharing programs. On behalf of Hip Housing, I'd like to thank the Honorable Mayor Big Stick, members of the Pacifica Town City Council Meeting for your enduring support of our organization. As a symbol of our appreciation for your partnership, I'm excited to present you with the Hip Housing 2024 calendar this year. Each year, Hip Housing develops this calendar, asks children from around the county in grades kindergarten through fifth to draw a picture of a home and tell us what home means to them. This year, we had over 320 calendar entries, the most we've ever received. And from these entries, we selected 13 winners, 12 for each of the months and one for this front cover, this beautiful cover. My favorite is October. You could see that they really went all out on the style and look for the October. And she said, quote, "My home is a golden treehouse where my imagination goes wild and my dreams come true." Which I think that's really lovely. We've got a lot of quotes in here from the kids. We hope you enjoy the calendar and that it shares. It serves as a beautiful reminder throughout the year of how important housing is to everyone in our county, including children. More information about Hip Housing's programs and our calendar contest can be found at www.hiphousing.org. I just wanted to thank all of you. I have one of these for each of you and others can purchase them for $5 through Hip Housing. So, thank you.
Thank you, council members, any comments?
Yeah, I just really want to thank you and everyone at Hip Housing for all the work that you do and also for your participation in the Pacifica Collaborative. We're so lucky to always have someone from Hip Housing around our table. It really helps us to create relationships and to be able to give warm handoffs, right? When folks come to us and need resources, those relationships are a key factor in us to be able to do that. So, thank you so much.
It's so important to have such a great relationship, so thank you.
Thank you, Anita, so much for being here tonight. And you mentioned your home-sharing program and I, just for the public, I just thought I'd say a little bit more because it's a really interesting, unique program where, you know, if someone is having trouble paying their mortgage or their rent and needs a roommate and there's someone who's looking for a place to stay, this is where Hip Housing can help match people to share housing together and share those costs. So, and I know that's promoted on the City Managers Connect with Pacifica regularly. So, yeah, please reach out if you have space or if you need a room.
Yeah, it definitely helps both those looking for a place to live as well as those that have space in their homes. So, definitely, thank you so much for mentioning that.
I really want to thank you for the calendar. It's so fun. And I work at, my day job is at a school in Pacifica. So, it's very exciting to see when there's a Pacifica, you know, calendar month sometimes. Last year, there was. But just having an opportunity for the kids to be engaged in that is just terrific.
I think so, definitely, thank you again.
Yeah, and I appreciate that you're sending us the Hip Housing every month. I forward it to people. It's very helpful. It's great having the translated version as well.
Huge resource, thank you, I'll mention that. Great, where can I leave these for you? These are, I have some for all of you. Okay.
Wait, come back, I'm not done yet.
Yes.
I always try to speak last, it's kind of a thing. But you all at Hip Housing have been a tremendous partner to the entire county, let alone us, for many, many years now. And it's an invaluable resource, especially here in the Bay Area where finding housing is a trick. It's very telling of our community that two of the sitting council members are renters. And I don't know about Mary, but I know if I hadn't had the good fortune of a almost three-decade-long cultivated relationship with my landlord and my house, I'm not sure that I would be able to live in Pacifica. So, thank you so much for what you do. I really do look forward to this calendar every year. It's a really cool thing to see children who, you know, are telling the tale of why what you do is so important and why, as a community, taking the approach of helping each other to have a roof is so important. If you'd be willing to take a picture of us with the calendars,
I would love that.
I think you mentioned your social media earlier.
I did, and I would love to.
No, we want you in the picture too. Okay, next we have a special presentation from the San Mateo County Libraries. It's the annual report presentation. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Julie Smith and I am going to be the new library manager for the Pacifica Libraries starting next week. And with me, I have...
And I'm Julia Wright. I'm the Pacifica Senior Librarian and I've only been around since May. So, me and Julia, both pretty new, it's exciting. Oh, yeah.
We also have with us Mary Obler. She's our newish Deputy Director of Library Services.
All right, so good evening, Mayor Big Stick and members of the City Council. We are pleased to present the Libraries Annual Report for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Do I have the power? Ah ha, I do. So, each of our 13 libraries is unique, but also part of a larger family offering, transformative experiences, and a single mission to strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and an environment for learning. First established as a county-free library in 1912, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. Covering 351 square miles, our service area is comprised of our 11-member cities and the unincorporated areas of the county. San Mateo County Libraries is uniquely positioned to see the broader county service area while at the same time, understanding each community we serve. The unique diversity and complexity of those we serve inspire and drive our services. Our staff's diversity mirrors the communities we serve, helping us incorporate the wisdom of varied lived experiences to better offer inclusive resources, meaningful services, and engaging events. Our goal is to reflect our communities by providing valuable time, space, and tools they need to feel represented and ready to explore. San Mateo County Libraries provides unmatched service to our community and we are consistently ranked as one of the best libraries in the nation. Feedback from the community influences our work and strengthens our resolve to provide enlightening, exciting, and essential services. San Mateo County Libraries continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout statistics include our 1.5 million library visits, which is a 56% increase over last year; 2.3 million items circulated, which is 6% more items checked out than last year; and our over 245,000 program and event attendees, which is a 126% increase over last year. More people are participating in our programs, visiting our locations, and checking out our eclectic collection of materials. Here are a few highlights. This year, we saw an impressive 4.3 million Wi-Fi sessions, served over 40,000 nourishing meals, and checked out over 28,000, checked out laptops over 28,000 times. The following charts summarize totals for Sharp Park Library and Sanchez Library through year-end for key library services. Overall gains across both Pacifica Libraries are similar to what we see system-wide. Compared to San Mateo County Libraries as a whole, Sharp Park has seen stronger increases in physical circulation, program attendance, and digital downloads. Total visitor count at Sharp Park Library was just 8% shy of the visitor count from fiscal year 2018 to 2019, prior to pandemic closures.
Our incredible community continues to re-energize us, taking our innovation to new heights. This year, we introduced new programs and initiatives that many in our county met with gratitude and celebration. We're excited to share a few of our significant achievements featured in this report. This March, we celebrated the first anniversary of our expanded seven-day-a-week service for a total of over 36,000 service hours. Expanded evening and weekend hours also provided more in-person opportunities for discovery and support through access to the latest technology, programming, and school and job resources that meet many interests. Additional hours are critical in expanding equitable access to people who work multiple jobs, have non-traditional schedules, or attend school. Our brand-new Maker Mobile hit the road this summer, taking maker activities and tech to new horizons. The Maker Mobile is a zero-emission, custom-built vehicle that delivers high-impact maker programs beyond our libraries. Having this vehicle means we can take state-of-the-art tech to more people in more places. Residents who may have never experienced technology like 3D printing and laser cutting can now do so thanks to this initiative. Pacifica Library staff brought the Maker Mobile to Sanchez Library earlier this month and many residents enjoyed spending time exploring and creating. Power Up Afternoons offers K-12 students opportunities to connect and grow with after-school experiences. These discovery and learning-filled afternoons have strengthened our connections with local students and families. Power Up Afternoons has reached thousands of kids. Participants enjoyed 2,242 hours of programming in which creativity and learning were encouraged. 97% said they enjoyed their experiences at the library. The Big Lift Inspiring Summers Program, created to prevent the loss in learning that can happen over summer break, continues to impact the lives of young residents and their families. Through the generous support of County Measure K Funds, the program served 960 students this year and has shown strong, positive academic gains in both literacy and math across participating school districts. Language is power and being able to read in your preferred language is invaluable. Through the addition of 29,000 world language items, our communities now have more opportunities to experience linguistic diversity than ever before. Chinese, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Russian, Tagalog, and Spanish voices are now more represented in our collections. It's part of our commitment to providing equitable access to materials for all, ensuring community members feel seen and supported. This year, we launched Mental Health First Aid Training to continue supporting our communities. Mental Health First Aid is an initiative making training available to empower community members to respond and provide initial help and support to someone experiencing a mental health crisis. The training has given our public service staff additional expertise to help someone in need. In collaboration with several partner agencies, we are now providing direct service to patrons inside our libraries. They're better connecting residents to unemployment assistance, low-income housing eligibility, food assistance, and other safety net services. Supplies like pads and tampons are as necessary as toilet paper and soap and yet, they are not readily available, accessible, or affordable. We believe that physical need shouldn't keep anyone from using our library, so we decided to take action. By offering free menstrual products in all our libraries, anyone in need can get these necessary resources and continue using our services. We joyfully welcome the return of in-person volunteers this year. Enthusiastic volunteers, friends of the library, and foundation members have generously devoted thousands of hours of their time. Their hours of service are essential to advancing important equity goals, whether signing up a tutor, an adult literacy learner, or contributing language skills and supporting staff with bilingual storytime. Our staff, also known as our library champions, are our most important organizational asset. This year, we increased library positions and celebrated the return of local teen interns to our libraries for the first time since 2019. I'd like to share a short, heartwarming video that highlights our library champions and the incredible services they provide.
San Mateo County Libraries is located in the Bay Area. We have 13 branches and cover 351 square miles. We do everything from offering storytimes to young children. We engage with teens with a lot of programming such as craft programs or college career and career courses. We offer so many resources, more than just books. We offer free meals to families. We offer tech tutor help. We also offer resource guidance for families who are having difficulty navigating how to get free food.
We have twenty printers, we have laser cutters, we have podcasting equipment, and we have VR systems and we also have a memory lab where our patrons can save their memories. Patrons are learning new skills. They're learning with each other and at the same time, they're creating a caring and inclusive community.
We try really hard to make sure that we see needs that are in the community and then try to meet those needs, whether that is just helping somebody learn how to access their email or set up an email, to helping them find the perfect book for their kid who is not so stoked about reading. Everyone has a talent here.
We have a wide range of physical and digital materials. We have what we call our Library of Things and that includes things like bikes and sewing machines, hotspots, laptops, Chromebooks. We have energy kits. We even loan LELIs for you to play with.
Our libraries are the center of our community. They're a place where people come to do research, to study, to read books to their kids. And San Mateo County Libraries does an excellent job in figuring out how we can impact all of our communities within San Mateo County and how we can best utilize the resources that we have to support them, all at no cost. It's a great feeling.
As we approach the end of 2023, Pacifica has much to look forward to in 2024. One of the exciting programs we are participating in is a free diaper distribution. We launched the program in Pacifica on Saturday, November 18, giving away free diapers and baby wipes to families in Pacifica. We have four more distribution days planned in December and January. And finally, the groundbreaking for the library outpost in Sanchez is tentatively scheduled for the first week of December. We hope to provide more updates soon. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to showcase some of our incredible accomplishments and for your ongoing support of the Pacifica Libraries. In addition, I would like to thank and recognize library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, the Pacifica Friends of the Library for their dedication and advocacy, city staff and council for your ongoing support, in particular, Mayor Big Stick and City Manager Kevin Woodhouse for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. Thank you, we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, council.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Hi. Hi, Julie, it's good to see you again. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our communities. I was able to attend the Be Sensitive, Be Brave training that you had here and it's just really wonderful to see the folks in your presentation. Some of our colleagues I recognized from the library board and we've been really trying to push mental health services and resources and so, the library is helping in that way. It's really wonderful, so thank you so much. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to say and thank you for participating in the collaborative. I'll see you at the meeting.
Thank you, very excited to be here.
It's very exciting to have you here. Julie and I worked together in the Pacifica School District for six years and I've watched her take off in her career and it's so thrilling to have you first work for San Mateo County Libraries and then now, to be the manager of our two branches in Pacifica. Yes! Having been the librarian at IBL Middle School right down the street from Sharp Park Library, Julie knows intimately how our systems mesh. And we've been told, and I believe it, by the librarian from the County Office of Education, that Pacifica School District is very unique in our relationship and how much we collaborate with San Mateo County Library. And our opinion has always been, well, it's the same clients. We serve the same people and so, it just makes so much sense to work together. I know the D and D Dungeons and Dragons thing that's happening is huge and we appreciate all the, you know, bringing of technology the best you can to Pacifica, given our limited space. I'm sure the mayor will have more to say on this, but I just wanted to put in my two cents in looking at that video and seeing the modern library facilities that exist everywhere else in our county and how much I look forward to them existing here in Pacifica. Our staff is awesome. The programs are fantastic, as we saw in the data. And all we need now is the facility to match that excellence. So, thanks for being here, Julie, we're super thrilled.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you all, Julie, Julia, and Mary for being here tonight and giving us a glimpse into all that you do and I like all the numbers and the statistics and it's wonderful to see our libraries coming back from COVID. You know, not quite at their height yet, but definitely on the way there with a lot more use and a lot more circulation and seeing the even increase in online book rentals, which is what I often do because it's easy just from the comfort of your own living room. So, I appreciate it and all the programs that you do. So I appreciate it, and all the programs that you do run, even though our facilities maybe aren't as nice as we'd like them to be quite yet, but you do a lot with the space that you have. I was at the Be Sensitive, Be Brave training, some meditation training, and then the Beach Coalition meets there regularly, you know? So just thank you for all that you do for our community that goes so much more beyond books, obviously. Thanks.
Well, I get to have the privilege of serving on the JPA Board. So first of all, welcome to Pacifica. Welcome back to Pacifica. It's really good to have you here with us. And serving on the JPA, I get to be immersed at any given moment in time in the sheer breadth of how much our library system is able to do, and it's extraordinary how much it's able to do. When we were having those discussions almost eight years ago now around putting a bond measure together, I think that what was largely lost on the community was exactly how much the library has to offer aside from just books. It's hard for me to say that "just books" because to me, that's like why we get to be humans, is we have that ability to have symbolic language and share that in written form and pass it on in a concrete form where it's unchanging, et cetera. But what a modern library does is extraordinary, and the way a modern library is partnering with the community to make up those inequities where they see the need, from personal hygiene products and diapers, all the way to frankly passes for state parks where somebody otherwise may not have that opportunity because that $5 could be a chunk of a meal for one's kid, and now they have a means by which to feed the more spiritualized parts of one's essence. So I would really love to be able to figure out a way to get that video in front of every single set of eyes in our community so that, you know, they have that snapshot of how much we are missing out on by not having the facilities to truly facilitate those experiences. So thank you here for giving us that window. I'm so grateful to be able to serve on the Board and hear what you all are doing on a constant basis and do everything I can to bring that back to our community to the extent able. So thank you for being here tonight. Would you be willing to take a shot with us, council members, to just a picture?
Sure.
Mary, if you'd be so kind as to join us also?
San Mateo County Libraries is located in the Bay Area. We have 13 branches and cover 351 square miles. We do everything from offering storytimes to young children. We engage with teens with a lot of programming such as craft programs or college career and career courses. We offer so many resources, more than just books. We offer free meals to families. We offer tech tutor help. We also offer resource guidance for families who are having difficulty navigating how to get free food.
We have toilet printers, we have laser cutters, we have podcasting equipment, and we have VR systems, and we also have a memory lab where our patrons can save their memories. Patrons are learning new skills, they're learning with each other, and at the same time, they're creating a caring and inclusive community.
We try really hard to make sure that we see needs that are in the community and then try to meet those needs, whether that is just helping somebody learn how to access their email or set up an email, to helping them find the perfect book for their kid who is not so stoked about reading. Everyone has a talent here.
We have a wide range of physical and digital materials. We have what we call our Library of Things, and that includes things like bikes and sewing machines, hotspots, laptops, Chromebooks. We have energy kits. We even loan LELIs for you to play.
Our libraries are the center of our community. They're a place where people come to do research, to study, to read books to their kids, and San Mateo County Libraries does an excellent job in figuring out how we can impact all of our communities within San Mateo County and how we can best utilize the resources that we have to support them, all at no cost. It's a great feeling.
As we approach the end of 2023, Pacifica has much to look forward to in 2024. One of the exciting programs we are participating in is a free diaper distribution. We launched the program in Pacifica on Saturday, November 18th, giving away free diapers and baby wipes to families in Pacifica. We have four more distribution days planned in December and January. And finally, the groundbreaking for the library outpost in Sanchez is tentatively scheduled for the first week of December. We hope to provide more updates soon. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to showcase some of our incredible accomplishments and for your ongoing support of the Pacifica libraries. In addition, I would like to thank and recognize library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, the Pacifica Friends of the Library for their dedication and advocacy, city staff and council for your ongoing support, in particular Mayor Big Stick and City Manager Kevin Woodhouse for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, council.
Okay, I'll go ahead. Hi.
Hi.
Hi, Julie, it's good to see you again. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our communities. I was able to attend the Be Sensitive, Be Brave training that you had here, and it's just really wonderful to see the folks in your presentation. Some of our colleagues I recognized from the library board, and we've been really trying to push mental health services and resources, and so the library is helping in that way. It's really wonderful, so thank you so much. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for participating in the collaborative. I'll see you at the meeting.
Thank you. Very excited to be here.
It's very exciting to have you here. Julie and I worked together in the Pacifica School District for six years, and I've watched her take off in her career, and it's so thrilling to have you first work for San Mateo County Libraries and then now to be the manager of our two branches in Pacifica. Yes! Having been the librarian at IBL Middle School right down the street from Shaw Park Library, Julie knows intimately how our systems mesh, and we've been told, and I believe it, by the librarian from the County Office of Education, that Pacifica School District is very unique in our relationship and how much we collaborate with San Mateo County Library. And our opinion has always been, well, it's the same clients. We serve the same people, and so it just makes so much sense to work together. I know the DND Dungeons and Dragons thing that's happening is huge, and we appreciate all the, you know, bringing of technology the best you can to Pacifica, given our limited space. I'm sure the mayor will have more to say on this, but I just wanted to put in my two cents in looking at that video and seeing the modern library facilities that exist everywhere else in our county and how much I look forward to them existing here in Pacifica. Our staff is awesome. The programs are fantastic, as we saw in the data, and all we need now is the facility to match that excellence. So, thanks for being here, Julie. We're super thrilled.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you all, Julie, Julia, and Mary, for being here tonight and giving us a glimpse into all that you do, and I like all the numbers and the statistics, and it's wonderful to see our libraries coming back from COVID, you know, not quite at their height yet, but definitely on the way there with a lot more use and a lot more circulation, and seeing the even increase in online book rentals, which is what I often do because it's easy, just from the comfort of your own living room. So I appreciate it, and all the programs that you do run, even though our facilities maybe aren't as nice as we'd like them to be quite yet, but you do a lot with the space that you have. I was at the Be Sensitive, Be Brave training, some meditation training, and then the Beach Coalition meets there regularly, you know? So just thank you for all that you do for our community that goes so much more beyond books, obviously. Thanks.
Well, I get to have the privilege of serving on the JPA Board. So first of all, welcome to Pacifica. Welcome back to Pacifica. It's really good to have you here with us. And serving on the JPA, I get to be immersed at any given moment in time in the sheer breadth of how much our library system is able to do, and it's extraordinary how much it's able to do. When we were having those discussions almost eight years ago now around putting a bond measure together, I think that what was largely lost on the community was exactly how much the library has to offer aside from just books. It's hard for me to say that "just books" because to me, that's like why we get to be humans, is we have that ability to have symbolic language and share that in written form and pass it on in a concrete form where it's unchanging, et cetera. But what a modern library does is extraordinary, and the way a modern library is partnering with the community to make up those inequities where they see the need, from personal hygiene products and diapers, all the way to frankly passes for state parks where somebody otherwise may not have that opportunity because that $5 could be a chunk of a meal for one's kid, and now they have a means by which to feed the more spiritualized parts of one's essence. So I would really love to be able to figure out a way to get that video in front of every single set of eyes in our community so that, you know, they have that snapshot of how much we are missing out on by not having the facilities to truly facilitate those experiences. So thank you here for giving us that window. I'm so grateful to be able to serve on the Board and hear what you all are doing on a constant basis and do everything I can to bring that back to our community to the extent able. So thank you for being here tonight. Would you be willing to take a shot with us, council members, to just a picture?
Sure.
Mary, if you'd be so kind as to join us also?
San Mateo County Libraries is located in the Bay Area. We have 13 branches and cover 351 square miles. We do everything from offering storytimes to young children. We engage with teens with a lot of programming such as craft programs or college career and career courses. We offer so many resources, more than just books. We offer free meals to families. We offer tech tutor help. We also offer resource guidance for families who are having difficulty navigating how to get free food. We have toilet printers, we have laser cutters, we have podcasting equipment, and we have VR systems, and we also have a memory lab where our patrons can save their memories. Patrons are learning new skills, they're learning with each other, and at the same time, they're creating a caring and inclusive community.
We try really hard to make sure that we see needs that are in the community and then try to meet those needs, whether that is just helping somebody learn how to access their email or set up an email, to helping them find the perfect book for their kid who is not so stoked about reading. Everyone has a talent here.
We have a wide range of physical and digital materials. We have what we call our Library of Things, and that includes things like bikes and sewing machines, hotspots, laptops, Chromebooks. We have energy kits. We even loan LELIs for you to play.
Our libraries are the center of our community. They're a place where people come to do research, to study, to read books to their kids, and San Mateo County Libraries does an excellent job in figuring out how we can impact all of our communities within San Mateo County. And how we can best utilize the resources that we have to support them, all at no cost. It's a great feeling.
As we approach the end of 2023, Pacifica has much to look forward to in 2024. One of the exciting programs we are participating in is a free diaper distribution. We launched the program in Pacifica on Saturday, November 18th, giving away free diapers and baby wipes to families in Pacifica. We have four more distribution days planned in December and January. And finally, the groundbreaking for the library outpost in Sanchez is tentatively scheduled for the first week of December. We hope to provide more updates soon. I want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to showcase some of our incredible accomplishments and for your ongoing support of the Pacifica libraries. In addition, I would like to thank and recognize library staff for their tremendous work and creativity, the Pacifica Friends of the Library for their dedication and advocacy, city staff and council for your ongoing support, in particular Mayor Big Stick and City Manager Kevin Woodhouse for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. Thank you. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, council.
Good evening, everybody. Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. So just to clarify your question, you're talking about on page 60, the question about when the offices are open for recology?
No. I think I'm speaking about the yard. It's a paragraph nine, A, little a, and then big A.
And the heading is drop-off facility, so that sounds like more than offices.
Okay, yes, thank you. So I, yes, we actually do have representative from recology here. He's the general manager, Glenn Bongi, so he can probably speak to those hours, but this is something, just to let the council know, this is something that the council previously approved in October 10th of 2022.
So we are talking about the recycling yard, the drop-off facility we operate at 1046 Palmetto. So it is open Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and the drop-off hours on Tuesday and Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Saturday, it is 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
7:00 AM?
I believe 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM. I will verify that. It appears 7:00 or 8:00. I believe it's 7:00. We open early on Saturdays, but we close at 2:00 PM.
I appreciate that. I thought it was, but I was like, ooh, maybe I'm remembering something that didn't happen.
Nope, we are open.
Thank you. And city manager, our city attorney, with regard to the language in this on page 60, would we need to make an amendment there? Or can we, when it comes to time to make an approval for this item, could we say something about that? Or would it not be necessary?
That was a lot of questions, sorry. But all questions.
We are not discussing the agreement. This is just about rate increases, so I'm not sure that this is the appropriate vehicle to make those types of changes, but certainly staff will note that when the appropriate time to make those changes arises.
Thank you very much.
I think that's it.
Okay, does that satisfy you? That does not need to be polled?
Yes.
Okay. So if no one has anything to poll, we will go to public comment. And I do have one card from Kim Finale in relation to item number five. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the council on any item listed on the agenda should submit a speaker card, and it's a time limit of three minutes.
Hi, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. Kimberly Finale, resident of Pacifica, am asking this evening, before you approve the consent calendar item five, Recology of the Coast Rate Increase, please consider this. As residents of Pacifica, you and many members of our community likely have utilized the valuable resource included in our rates offered by Recology of the Coast to have bulky items picked up at your home. Three times yearly is excellent. Perhaps you've brought your extra or oversized recyclables to the yard on Palmetto during the designated days and hours. Also excellent. Some of us have even taken antifreeze appliances, batteries, computers, fluorescent light bulbs, furniture, televisions, motor oil to the same yard. This is a vital service to our city to help keep the community clear and clean of toxic waste, included in our current rates and much appreciated. There is something that we are not able to dispose of here in our own town, though, excess green waste. This just doesn't make sense. Why isn't there a designated location for us to bring our excess green waste and compost to? We can dispose of all things included in our rate, but why not excess green waste? This seems like a no-brainer. Being forced to add vehicle miles traveled to the greenhouse gas ledger is contradictory to the City of Pacifica's stated commitment to a cleaner, more sustainable Pacifica. It's just common sense. Recology trucks are already disposing of our green waste. Why can't we bring our excess green waste to the yard and have them take that away also? Put another way, we can dispose of anything in a bin or at the yard responsibly except excess green waste. Please require Recology of the Coast to accept excess green waste during designated days and hours before allowing them to increase our rates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was the only card I have for consent. I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom, so I'll give everyone one last opportunity if anyone had something to speak to on consent, and I will close public comment now and bring it back to council for questions deliberation. I think I'll follow up on the question that was just asked around green waste and at the yard. Glenn, do you have any response you'd like to make?
house. I think that if a tree could fall on your house, you should have the right to require an inspection of that tree annually, and that if problems are found, it will fall to the owners to actually remedy that before the tree falls on your property. We don't appear to have any protections for that either. Now, I might be coming across as a little bit anti-tree, but please understand, I am not. I absolutely love our trees, and I could not imagine walking down our streets and paths without them. I want the city to continue to encourage the planting of more trees, make no mistake. But realistically, almost if not all of the trees we have mixed into our communities were planted after the houses were built. And right now, we're kind of hamstrung by removing them or changing things around. Let's not be afraid of a little bit of change here. And please, let's temper some of these draconian rules just a little bit to make them a little bit more friendly. I will be sending these and my earlier suggestions to the members of the council for your consideration, and if you'd like to discuss them further. Thank you very much for your attention. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bisson. I have no further cards. So far, I don't think we're seeing any hands raised from Zoom. So one more glance around the room, and we will bring it back to council. Oh, I see a hand raised from Brent Turner. Brent, go ahead and unmute. State your name for the record. You have three minutes. I'll give you a warning when you have one minute left.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, it's Brent Turner. Is this, and my apologies if I'm coming in at the wrong time, is this a general public comment, or are you into the agenda items now?
This is general public comment.
Okay, so I will wait until my agenda item comes up. Thank you, and sorry to come in early.
No worries.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there's no one to speak on general public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to council for council communications. Who would like to go first? Council member Bowles.
Let's see, a few meetings this month. I met with the unhoused on the coast group. And actually, as we're talking about our emergency shelter ordinance later on the agenda, I just wanted to bring up a few things I learned at this meeting. We know that Pacifica has the third highest homeless count in the county as of the last count. There'll be another count performed this January, and there's always, they're always looking for volunteers, and I'm sure we'll get out more information about that. But if you look at the statistics by city population, we actually have the highest unhoused count in the county. There are more Pacifica residents living in their cars. We have one shelter on the coast that serves from Pacifica to Pascadero, the coast house that prioritizes coastal residents. It's the only family shelter on the coast. There are 50 people on the waitlist for that. There are seven people on the waitlist for our oversized vehicle spaces that the PRC manages for us, and there's no movement projected anytime soon. So this is a dire need, and especially as, you know, winter is approaching. I just really encourage us to take care of our own and our residents and think about how we might be able to do better as we move forward. Let's see, I met with the Pacifica Beach Coalition, and just want to announce that they have found a new part-time executive director, Dawn Zadonis, who's a Pacifica resident and who leads a design nonprofit in the rest of her time. She's terrific. They're having a picnic, St. Pedro Park, this Saturday at noon, if anybody wants to join us. Their butt blitz is going on. They've collected so far 76,000 cigarette butts. And I just want to remind people that those are toxic, they're not trash, they take 18 months to 10 years to disintegrate and pollute our ocean. So please dispose of them properly and not just flicking them out of your car. Emergency Preparedness Committee meeting, we had, oh, I forgot to write down her name. A young lady from the Youth Advisory Board came to speak with us, and we brainstormed about how to make a better connection with the schools and getting out information about emergency preparedness and so forth, and look forward to more collaboration there. So that was really exciting. Met with the PRC, with Mary also, about their space needs, and followed up with another meeting with Mike O'Neill, actually, who was helping brainstorm. The PRC is looking for more refrigeration space and food storage to be able to expand their food pantry. So he had a few ideas for that. And then he also got me caught up on some of his ideas around the Public Works Malagra and School District Partnership Project. And then had another meeting with Ray Hodges, the county housing director, again, looking for partnerships, educating us on how to put together a team for a potential affordable housing project. There's a lot of money, NOFA federal funding, about 20 million, and community development block grants that are often left on the table for early design planning. So those will, that information will be released in December. So trying to get ahead of that and see what we might be able to bring to Pacifica. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Let's see, where do I start? I will start with the age-friendly, Pacifica's Age Friendly Coalition has an age-friendly livability survey that's out, and the city wants to learn about your experience with Pacifica's livability as a person age 50 and older. And so if you'd like to take a look at that survey and fill it out, it'd be really great. It's on the Senior Services webpage, and then also it'll be in Connect Pacifica. And if you'd like me to forward it to you, I can do that as well. It's really important for us to be able to collect information so that we can work with the community, all sectors of the community, to make improvements and changes to make our community more livable and so that we can age in place comfortably, because that's what we all want to do, is to be able to age in place here. I attended the Water District meeting. Thanks, President Burgett, back there, I see you. And I just wanted to congratulate our very own Kimberly Finale, who won the Waterwise Garden Contest.
Oh, yay!
So it was so cute to see you go up there and then get your little pail. I don't know what was in it, but I was just like, look at you, you know? Well, in my eyes, I just saw you. I was like, all right, this is cool. And then you can go onto their website, they have a lot of information there. And one of the things that stood out to me is that you can get a 50-gallon rain barrel for $83. So if anyone's looking for a rain barrel, go down and talk to our folks at the North Coast County Water District. PCT, Pacific Coast Television, is having the red carpet auction on December 9th. And so tune in if you want to do some holiday shopping. It's a great way to do it. It's an annual auction, they've been having it for years. They are looking for volunteers to answer some phones. I'll be there as an auctioneer for the first couple hours of the evening, so that'll be fun. I get to work with Jonathan Markham again, which I love doing. And so, yeah, come on out for that. I want to thank Pacifica School Volunteers for Read Aloud Day. Read Aloud Day this year was up at Sunset Ridge Elementary School, and it was all based on peace and kindness to tie in with our Art for a Peaceful and Just Community project that we're doing through the Sanchez Art Center and the Pacifica Collaborative. It was really beautiful. Pacifica School Volunteers provided us with a bunch of different books on kindness and caring and peace and equity, which I thought was really wonderful. And so I got to go read. I know a lot of people from the city were also reading that day. I saw a lot of folks up there, so thank you for participating in that. We had our Pacifica Pride kickoff meeting, which was fun. It's always fun. We have a really great group of volunteers. We are looking for people to join our team. We're going to need decorators and fundraisers, and so I'll be getting more information out to the public in that way, because we are looking for some committed folks to actually be team leads. And so, yeah, that'll be great. I attended the Economic Development Committee meeting. I gotta say, this group, this committee group, they are just on fire, and they're very excited about what they're doing, and I can't wait to see what happens. And we had our newest member join us, Ed, joined us, and that was a really great addition. And, you know, we have a new economic development person who was hired for the city, Tara. And so what's Tara's last name? I'm sorry. Shit, yeah, thank you. So Tara has brought a really wonderful energy to that group. And so it's wonderful to see her and bring all of her knowledge to the table, and I feel like she's creating relationships with the committees, with the committee members, and it's wonderful. And so there'll be more information coming up about their city tours. One of the subcommittees is working on a tour calendar, so like, you can have a bike tour for all the breweries, and it'll be pretty neat to see what they come up with. And then their Brews and Blues event planning. Pacifica Resource Center is now accepting sponsors for the Holiday Joy Program, so please go ahead and go to Pacifica Resource Center online so you can see if you would like to sponsor a family this year. It's a wonderful program. I wouldn't be where I was if it wasn't for the Pacifica Resource Center. And when I was a single parent raising my daughter here in Pacifica, we were able to have Christmas because of this Holiday Joy Program. And so this year, my daughter and I get to sponsor a family and give back, and there's like nothing better than that. I think she's more excited about that than anything else about Christmas this year. So, yeah, please do that. There's the Holiday Lighting kickoff. Our whole weekend is coming up for Friday night, the community center at 6:00 PM. Then there's the Elf Market on Saturday, and then the Rockaway Beach Tree Lighting Sunday from 4:00 to 7:00. And I am assuming that we're going to be talking about Supervisor Horsley. I just wanted to mention that we will miss Supervisor Horsley very much. Passed away recently, and he, he was so patient with me when I was a new council member. I did not know what I was doing, and he just gently guided me and sternly at times. So I really appreciated that about him, and I will miss him.
I was sick and didn't go to anything or do anything except have a fever and be sick for a very, very long time. And now I'm better, yay. I'm looking forward to rejoining society and attending all the events this weekend. I will make a plug for people to get their next vaccine. Here's the truth. The public awareness machine that was put forward last time around was such a machine, and I was probably the first person in line. It hasn't been, at least to my ears, as loud and clear. And I kept going, yeah, I gotta, where do you even go? And I need to look into that, and oh, yeah, I probably should do that. And guess what? A lot of months went by from the last vaccine until what should have been the next one, the most recent one. So I'm not saying that was the the reason, I'm just saying I worked at the same school through the entire pandemic, after the pandemic, up until November 10th, and I was well, 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 shockingly, because I do all kinds of surveillance tests once a week, twice a week, and I'm always kind of expecting, you know, like something. And I go, geez, are these tests working? But super proud of the fact that, yeah, they did, and so do vaccinations, in my opinion. And I was really sick. So I don't wish anyone to miss their, almost missed my trip to Oregon to see my mom for Thanksgiving. Came this close. And also, please really do read carefully, if you do become ill, the guidelines that clarify when and how one can return to the working world, because shockingly to me, you don't have to test negative before you can re-enter your working place, so long as you mask up and blah, blah, blah. I would suspect there's a personal decision component that can go into all decisions regarding our own health. And I certainly exercised that right myself in light of the fact that I interact with hundreds of people every day. So this is my public service announcement to you all, and I'm channeling Councilmember Votrlas, who made a very moving and heartfelt public service announcement of her own in July at Relay for Life. So my message is, get your vaccination. And the last thing I'll add is, in addition to all the fun events coming up this weekend, I noted there is the Maker, what's it called? Winter Art Fair at Sanchez Art Center. It is terrific, and it's just a wonderful, lots of local vendors, crafters. It just, if you're looking for holiday gift ideas, I found it to be terrific.
You know when that one is?
Yes, the 9th and 10th, the following weekend. So if you have an opportunity, I would say, go to the Sanchez Art Center, Saturday or Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. I have my appointment to get my vaccine on Tuesday night.
Did you just make it just now?
No, no. I actually was going to get it Friday, and then something came up, but I rescheduled for Tuesday, so I'm chomping at the bit, and thank you for the reminder.
You're welcome.
And I look forward to attending pretty much all of the events that have been enumerated, so thank you for bringing those up so that I don't need to. I appreciate that. Jack Burgett, the president of the Water District Board, North Coast County Water District Board, is there in the back. Hello, Jack.
Hi.
Craziness in the world. I already had a habit of wanting Ukraine to not be at war with its aggressor, and now there's also that complicated thing in Israel that is still complicated and now explosive. So my sincerest wish for peace in this world, and that bullies and terrorists of all kinds and all ilks stop instigating the instabilities. I actually spent some time hanging out with the police department this week. I spent some time with our chief, Sarah Suha, and she brought me around the office, the police station, and I got to thank a handful of folks who are doing their duty as they do day in and day out every day. Couple nights ago, the night after Thanksgiving, actually, I got to enjoy a ride along with Officer Evans, who had been serving at the grocery store for a very long time and who suggested I might have a ride along. So I definitely took him up on it, and I got to learn what that looks like in action, learn how things are prioritized when our staff is as thin as it is. I actually, within the two-hour window, watched a person being chased and arrested. It was very exciting. It was a minor thing comparatively, but it was extraordinary to gain that level of insight into processes that I just kind of take for granted otherwise. Certainly, at various points, I've made calls, and then the police arrive and take care of things, but to actually see it happen in real time is rather extraordinary. So thank you, chief, thank you to the department, and thank you, Officer Evans, for continuing my education and insight. Had that big LAFCO meeting in East Palo Alto, in which LAFCO did decide to make the sanitary sewer district a subsidiary of the City of East Palo Alto. That was a big one on a rainy night, and it happened. We continued to talk about the Broadmoor Police Protection District, and I deeply look forward to a meeting at LAFCO in which we do not have to any longer. We had a Peninsula Clean Energy Board Retreat. Essentially, that means we tack an extra hour onto the Essentially, that means we tack an extra hour onto the meeting intentionally. We talked about our two high-level strategic plan elements, one being 24/7 power. In other words, the power is always clean and we're never taking any power off the grid any time of day. We have 100% clean power going through. But then if it's in the wintertime when there's no solar and we might have to take from PG&E's grid in a certain way, that it doesn't quite feel like clean. So we had this 99% goal by 2027, which was very ambitious. What I am proud to say is that it looks like we're on track for 83% by 2027. With a little push, we might actually make it to 90% by 2027. But we took this ambitious goal. We're bringing it back to reasonable levels and we're going to keep on trudging toward it, albeit maybe a little further down the road than we thought. The other big push is for decarbonization by, I believe, 2035. And we learned about distributed energy resources, or DERS, which essentially creates a virtual power plant because of all of the solar energy in the neighborhood. And as we were talking previously about the 24/7 and energy procurement, I think that some of that might actually get shored up the more we're able to incentivize and cultivate that virtual power plant, energy grid on the ground. So I see ends connecting and great progress is being made. And this was a long way to begin what is going to continue through the year, addressing the various strategic policy goals. Enjoyed Council of Cities at the San Francisco International Airport Aviation Museum, which I did not know existed at SFO. It was an interesting experience going to the SFO Airport for a reason other than hopping on a plane or receiving somebody hopping off a plane. I wish Councilmember Vaterlaus were here to fill in some of the details. And Sue, we wish you well. But I did get to enjoy that night, spending a little time with her as well as many of our other colleagues throughout the region. On the 21st, some of us Peninsula Clean Energy members, a subcommittee, if you will, met with Josh Becker to get updates from Josh Becker's office on his legislation for the year that pertains to PCE. And we asked some questions and gave updates about what Peninsula Clean Energy is doing so as to try and get his gears turning in terms of laws that he's going to want to see go through. And then lots and lots of Thanksgiving on the Thursday and also Friendsgiving on the Saturday. It was welcome to spend time with family and friends, eat good food, and just spend a moment not worrying too much. So I hope that everybody in our community was able to have that opportunity. And for those who were not able to, I hope that you're going to be doing better soon. And all that more or less said, we will be adjourning in remembrance of our close friend, former county supervisor, Don Horasly. I'll certainly carve out some time at the end of the meeting to do some remembrance and recollection. But I recall that I hadn't been at council maybe three meetings. And I mean, just as somebody trying to participate from the audience. And I wound up at a meeting in which he was called upon to try and help figure out better relationships between policing and mental health. And the sincerity with which he asked my opinion on the matter as somebody at the time who felt very ignorant and who spur of the moment tried to concoct something hopefully helpful and more or less in alignment with the incredible work Marianne Nyheart was doing in that moment in time. But the sincerity with which he asked me that question as somebody who felt like I knew nothing was to me in that moment extraordinary. And certainly, he was always there, not just as I was amongst the audience, but when I took on this role. So Don will be sorely missed. And we can talk a little bit more about that at the end of the meeting. And staff.
Thank you, Mayor Bigstick. Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I have a couple communications I'd like to provide. First, I wanted to provide an update about the Civic Center renovation project. And notably, just summarize quickly, there's a memo providing update information and notably, a lot of pictures about the project of the renovation project that is posted and available on the project website, on the engineering pages of the Public Works site, on the city's webpage. The main takeaways that I'll mention are that the project is progressing, but due to some contractor delays related to electrical switchgear, equipment ordering and receipt, the actual completion of it and powered up is not going to be until late March or April. And while the project is progressing and we're working hard and the quality of the work is good, we hope that everything's essentially done much earlier than that and allows a reasonable time for the transition improvements, furnitures and fixtures and furnishings that can be installed as well as planning for a great ribbon cutting for the event. But I did want to mention that timeline. The detail is in the update memo on the Civic Center project webpage. And notably, look at the pictures because it's just stunning how good it looks and how different it looks than previously. So we're very excited about this great community asset for the organization and the community that's coming forward in the next months. I also wanted to mention that next Tuesday evening, we have our second Local Coastal Land Use Plan Community Meeting. This is a community roundtable discussion at the community center, 5:30, dinner will be served. And the meeting commences at 6:00. And there's, for anyone that's interested, and many have already signed up, would like to get registration so we know account related to food. Also notably, we are going to provide childcare for the evening, at least until a certain point in the evening at night. I'm not sure what that cutoff will be. But the point about childcare is that if anybody in the public does need childcare in order to be able to attend the meeting, the deadline to let us know that is noon on this Friday so that we can plan accordingly with childcare providers. So that's important. The signups have been robust for the meeting. It's going to be a very informative one and we look forward to that. And finally, Councilmember Beer did mention some of the upcoming Pacifica Polar Palooza events that are happening. That's a new branding for the events this weekend. Kickoff on Friday, 5:30 to 9:00 PM at the community center with lighting of the building, caroling, Santa greeting, and the elf market that evening. Elf market continues into Saturday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, photos with Santa, Santa's workshop. And then on Sunday is the Chamber of Commerce's sponsored Rockaway Tree Lighting Festival, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Santa arrives at 5:00 PM. And the tree lighting ceremony is at 6:00 PM. So I just wanted to mention those details for kicking off that part of our holiday season this Saturday, I mean, this weekend.
Did you say that was your final announcement?
Yes, that's.
So I seem to recall that we had a recent promotion that, at least to me, was rather exciting.
Oh, sure, yeah. I'm happy to talk about that as well.
I believe we have a new Deputy Director of Public Works.
Yeah, our plant manager, Louis Sun, after a competitive recruitment, has been promoted as the Deputy Public Works Director for Wastewater. We're excited to have Louis move into that position, which before he had taken a brief stint in Foster City, he was in that position and came back to us. And Louis is exceptionally qualified on that front. He, some of his credentials here. He's a California licensed civil engineer and a certified Grade 5 wastewater plant operator. He has many years of experience in wastewater and as a wastewater engineer, beginning in Bakersfield before he had come to Pacifica. And we are very excited for him moving into this position. He, in his spare time, he actually is an adjunct professor teaching wastewater issues. So he's very committed to the field and the complexities of it. And he actually lives in Pacifica with his wife and his son. Or two sons, sorry. Yeah, he has two sons. One's in college, but one's still here in Pacifica. Happy to announce that. Thank you for that reminder.
No problem. Congratulations, Louis. We are so excited and happy for all of us. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to public hearings. We have one public hearing. Introduction of an ordinance initiated by the City of Pacifica to A, add a new Article 53, emergency shelters to the City of Pacifica zoning regulations, Chapter 4 of Title IX of the Pacifica Municipal Code, or PMC, to create zoning provisions for approval, construction and operation of an emergency shelter consistent with the requirements of Senate Bill 2, SB 2. B, amend Article 11 C-2 Community Commercial District to make an emergency shelter with 20 or fewer occupants a permitted use and an emergency shelter with 21 to 30 occupants a conditional use. C, amend Article 14. O, Professional Office District in Article 15, C-R Commercial Recreation District to exclude emergency shelters. D, update sections of the City of Pacifica zoning regulations to include updated definitions and terms for community care facility and family daycare home to be consistent with the requirements and definitions of state law. And E, make other minor conforming revisions. File number 2023-013, text amendment TA-124-23. Recommended SEQA status exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15269, emergency projects and Section 15061B3. General rule exemption. Planning Commission recommend approval of the text amendment by a vote of five to zero with two absences on November 6. The proposed action moved to waive the first reading of everything I just read. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Bigstick and members of the council. My name is Brianna Harkushia, Senior Planner with the Planning Department, who will be giving the presentation this evening. As Mayor Bigstick mentioned, the project before you this evening is a text amendment initiated by the City of Pacifica for an emergency shelter ordinance and various other text amendments to be consistent with the requirements and definitions of state law. In addition, tonight's Planning Commission liaison is Commissioner Gregory, who is with us this evening. The proposed amendment would enact a new Article 53 to Chapter 4 zoning of Title IX Planning and Zoning of the Pacifica Municipal Code concerning emergency shelters to comply with the requirements of state law. Other amendments would modify the definitions and permitted and conditional uses sections of the zoning regulations to update the definition and terms for community care facilities and family daycare homes. Additionally, the maximum number of children permitted to be cared for in a family daycare home would be updated in the permitted and conditional uses sections of the zoning regulations. The city is proposing the text amendment to identify a zoning district that allows emergency shelters as a permitted use without a conditional use or other discretionary permit and that are suitable for residential uses to be consistent with Senate Bill 2. In addition, staff has prepared this text amendment to implement the required zoning to permit emergency shelters to address the Housing and Community Development Department's comment on the city's six-cycle housing element and to be consistent with state law. Completion of this effort is a prerequisite to obtain Housing Element Certification by HCD. Staff also includes a thorough analysis of sites to demonstrate that the zoning district permitting emergency shelters by right would accommodate emergency shelters per the methodology that HCD has required by Assembly Bill 2339. Details of this analysis will be discussed later in this presentation. A background about the other text amendments. They are proposed to perform cleanup of the Pacifica Municipal Code to be consistent with state law. The amendments would update the definitions and terms for child daycare homes to family daycare homes, which is a consistent term per state law, and to update the maximum number of children to be cared for from 12 to 14 in all residentially zoned properties. Additionally, the term and definition for special care facilities is, will be updated to community care facilities. As previously mentioned, Senate Bill 2 and Assembly Bill 2339 requires a thorough analysis of sites when zoning for emergency shelters and requires jurisdictions to provide key criteria. The first one, at least one zone identified to permit emergency shelters without a conditional use permit or other discretionary action, such as a SEQA analysis. Two, identify sufficient capacity and include analysis per the calculation methodology based on homeless population and land area. In addition, to analyze the vacant versus non-vacant sites to identify suitable sites. And the last is, allows jurisdictions to develop objective standards for emergency shelters. The proposed new Article 53 would have six new sections. The definition section is proposed to be consistent with state law. And some key elements in these sections are that the C-2 zoning district would permit emergency shelters by right. Emergency shelter development must be consistent with the development regulations of the C-2 zoning district, off-street parking and loading, and any Uniform Building and Housing Code standards. Standards for emergency shelter operations, which include a limited term of stay, size of waiting client intake, number of beds permitted by right is 20, and anything between 21 and up to a maximum of 30 would require a use permit. And emergency shelter proposals will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Director. As previously mentioned, Assembly Bill 2339 identifies specific criteria that local governments are required to analyze to demonstrate sites with sufficient capacity when identifying zoning designations to accommodate emergency shelters. Key criteria of the amendment include designating at least one zoning district that allows emergency shelters by right, the site's analysis to document that there is enough land to accommodate the need for emergency shelters, the site analysis to ensure designated zoning districts include adequate sites that meet the state requirements, and site analysis for capacity of at least one year-round emergency shelter. As included in, staff has included a site-by-site data analysis in Attachment D. And maps prepared to visually reflect each site are included as Attachment E to the staff report. As shown on this slide, the state requires the city to demonstrate enough land, or also known as adequate sites, to accommodate the need for emergency shelters by multiplying 161 people experiencing homelessness by 200 square feet. This would result in a 0.74 acre of land area that would be needed. The table indicates here that the C-2 zoning district has about 45 acres of non-vacant sites and 1.85 acres of vacant sites. And staff has confirmed that sites would be consistent with the capacity requirements. There are approximately 45 acres on 15 parcels ranging from 0.1 acres to 30.2 acres that are developed sites or considered non-vacant sites. Staff identified property along Oceana Boulevard with vacant site attendance spaces and also multiple developed properties that contain office and commercial uses with what we define as an ILV ratio of less than 0.5. The ILV, or Improvement to Land Value Ratio, was used to identify redevelopment potential as an ILV with a lower ratio would indicate a greater potential for redevelopment. And this is because the value of existing improvements is less than the value of the underlying land. The second segment of the analysis included reviewing vacant sites with non-residential zoning that allow residential development. These sites included three parcels ranging from 0.13 to 1.56 acres. And staff identified one vacant parcel that would provide capacity to meet the assumptions of permitted number of beds or persons to be housed. of beds or persons to be housed by, per the proposed development standards of an emergency shelter. Based on the analysis staff performed, non-vacant and vacant sites identified in the C2 zoning district were found to be suitable sites. On November 6th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and adopted the resolution recommending that the council approve the text amendment with the amendments listed on this slide. The amendments to the ordinance are included as Attachment A to the staff report. Staff finds that the proposed text amendments would be exempt from SEQUAs pursuant to Sections 15629 and Sections 15061. And staff finds that the proposed amendments to the ordinance are consistent with state law and exempt from SEQA. And staff recommends that the city council introduce the ordinance to approve the text amendment and use the recommended motion on packet page 103. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And welcome, Commissioner Wright.
Good evening. I'm glad to be here, serving as liaison. I'd like to start out by saying, this was yet another big lift by staff on top of a whole series of big lifts. And I see it firsthand, I'm sure you see it somewhat firsthand, but it's been really impressive, the level of depth that they go into on all this stuff, trying to put together the best possible proposal, both for the city, for us in general, taking on so many different considerations and perspectives. And then they bring it to us at council, who have a diversity of our own opinions and our own perspectives. And in doing so, we took their recommendation and we went bit by bit, trying to take in public comment, trying to take in all our perspectives and considerations to come up with the best possible proposal, not just for now, but for the long term, to make this work. And they, on the fly, worked with us to come up with what you see before you. And that's the work product that you have, mainly thanks to all their hard work. Any questions?
Well, thank you, staff, first of all. Well done, well done. Was there anything you wanted to add about the deliberations that commission had on the 6th? I did watch it all, but perhaps you'd like to fill in?
I don't want to get too much into reflecting my own personal opinions on things, and I think that the-
Perhaps conclusions that the group came through with would be? Yeah.
Yeah. We went through site by site. We eliminated some that we thought were inappropriate and really did try to take all the consideration of both what we got from the community, our own personal perspectives, and staff's recommendation, forge it all into one big package to deliver to you. You also have different considerations and pressures and considerations, and we understand that, but we really do think that we did a thorough, thorough job in going through this and offer this as our final work product.
I thought you did a thorough job, too. Council members, do you have any questions?
Go for it.
Council member Bowles.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And thank you, staff, Brianna and Christian, and Commissioner Wright. So I'm a little confused, just like looking at the maps and the list of all the parcels. So if a parcel is mapped or on your list, are we definitely saying that that is a suitable site at this point, that wasn't presented here, but what is in the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Bowles. The sites that were analyzed as part of the, I guess, count for emergency shelter, or sites that might accommodate emergency shelters, were sites listed as Site Number 1 through 18. Those were primarily the sites that were looked at for what we mentioned, improvement to land value ratio, if they were non-vacant sites. If they were vacant sites, they were reviewed based on proximity to amenities or services. That includes transportation or some retail services to serve individuals utilizing a potential emergency shelter. And those were criteria specifically from HCD's requirements of how we should analyze certain sites. So the sites that were reviewed are listed as Site 1 through 18. I think that might be the Excel sheet.
And just for the public, that's packet page 136. And so just to follow up to that, so I understand the improvement to land value ratio, and there are a few on this list that exceed that, but that's okay to HCD. I assume since you're including those. I can give you an example.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, Planning Director Christian Murdock. So I think, to start off, the terminology that we're using can potentially be confusing. We've gone through extensive processes thus far for the housing element update and spoken at great length about the sites and the site's analysis and establishing feasibility and so forth. It's not quite the same process, and at least on the staff side, we encourage not thinking about the sites in the same way particularly as you would think about them in the housing element update process. There's a more generalized sort of suitability analysis overall with the zoning district that's been identified. It's not as though each site needs to check every box to sort of clear the high bar in the same way that the sites do for the housing element process.
Okay, so it's okay to include them? We're showing overall capacity?
Correct. And as a general theme, this is a conservative analysis. It's really helpful to think about all of the C2 zoned sites as potential emergency shelter sites, but we've excluded some that perhaps weren't good candidates, or those that are already designated as housing sites in the housing element. So as not to overpromise in terms of the potential feasibility, so even with that smaller, more refined set of candidate sites that we've analyzed, we believe the analysis demonstrates suitability for purposes of complying with the statutes related to the emergency shelter zoning requirements.
Okay. And there's, a number of these parcels are in the coastal zone. Is this something that's going to have to, is going to require an LCP amendment with the Coastal Commission for those particular sites?
Yes, it will, but for purposes of the housing element update process, where this ordinance is required for housing element certification, we do not need to complete the LCP amendment process in order to comply with HCD's requirement to have the ordinance on the books.
Okay. I have a few more, but if somebody else wants to go? Okay. So Brianna mentioned that the definition of emergency shelters, that's on page 105, was from the state, I believe. And I'm curious about a little bit of the language, but if it's state, you know, we don't really have a say in what it, in the specific verbiage, I'm fine to let that go. But it says, "Emergency shelters would provide housing with minimal supportive services." And then it talks further down about navigation centers, and just having toured the navigation center in Redwood City that just opened this year, I mean, those are heavy on services. So I'm curious what the word minimal means, if that's, again, if that's something that the state has put in or something that we're adding, and whether that limits us.
Right. I think it's a great observation, Councilmember Bowles. I don't know if I have the exact answer. I think part of it could be in the interpretation of the intent of minimal. So I think it could be meant to say it needs to have at least minimal services, right? So it's not just a room with a cot in it, right, where people are dropped off and left to their own devices. So ensuring there's some minimal level of services is how I understand that provision. And it could be more expansive services, right, as you might see in a navigation center, for example.
Okay, okay. I read minimal differently, like it was-
It's the most you could provide. I don't understand it that way.
Yeah, okay. And then the ordinance is restricting the number of beds and the six-month stay. So what happens if someone wants to build a shelter that's bigger than that, or, you know, is that then a discretionary process? We're just identifying what is a non-discretionary review here? Is that correct?
Yes, partially that is correct. So the ordinance would allow a maximum of 20 persons or beds for development of an emergency shelter. Anything greater, anything between 21 and up to 30, would require a conditional use permit. The number of beds or persons identified as 20 was a number that was considered acceptable from HCD's standpoint, when we did have conversations about the number of beds generally from other cities that have been proposed for emergency shelters. So yes, if someone does propose something greater, they would be required to obtain an additional, a conditional use permit for an emergency shelter.
So even over 30, that is allowed, but would require?
The ordinance specifically caps it at 30 as the maximum number of beds.
I'm not sure I'm okay, well, that's deliberation. We'll come back to that. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Other questions?
Oh, sorry. I wanted to clarify something about C2 zoning. And forgive me, because I didn't watch your planning commission meeting with the, you know, careful attention that the mayor did, so I'm sure he knows the answer to this question, but I'd like to know, or just to hear again, about C2 zoning and whether and how shelters can be permitted in that type of zone. Because there was email to us back and forth and information coming to, at least to me, suggesting that it wouldn't be permitted. And I wanted to double-check, because it looks like it would be. If you could just speak to that.
Sure. So to start, one of the requirements for identifying a zoning district for emergency shelter purposes is a zoning district that allows residential uses. And so unfortunately, you know, jurisdictions in our state have had a history of trying to put these in industrial areas because they're perceived to be undesirable. That not only had sort of the human and environmental impacts of being an industrial area, it also isolated them from services, transit, things to help people get back on their feet and into permanent housing situations. And so the legislature has said, "Well, you jurisdictions are going to treat these as residential uses as any other." So that's the baseline. We have to find a district that allows residential use. In Pacifica, there are purely residential districts that could have been selected or could still be, and there are mixed-use, commercial and residential districts. Because of the proximity of our commercial zoning districts to all of those desirable services and required components of the analysis for suitability, the C1 and C2 districts really lent themselves most favorably in the staff's analysis. And between those two, the C2 seems to be a better fit for a variety of reasons. With that said, the next step is to figure out, how do we make the zoning accommodated? And so the C2 district did not already include a land use to allow emergency shelters, and so this would create an emergency shelter use as a defined use, separate from the more conventional mixed-use residential. So I think there's perhaps been a misunderstanding among some that, oh, well, these could only be above the ground floor in a building with commercial use. As this ordinance has been drafted, a different use, separate from that residential above the ground floor, is being created, so a purely emergency shelter use could be located on a C2 zoned site.
Thank you.
I do have a couple minor questions of my own, but when y'all were having the conversation a moment ago about the caps on number of people an emergency shelter could have, it conclude with Councilmember Bowles saying something to the effect of, "I don't know if I'm okay with that," which I think in my mind begs the question, is there a mechanism by which, if we were to come to the conclusion, we could raise the cap past 30, why is 30 the magic number of placing the cap? Is that kind of where you were going also? Okay. Just to further that a little deeper.
So the 20 and 30-bed and person thresholds, as Senior Planner Harkushia mentioned, came out of a discussion between city staff and HCD staff about trying to calibrate the right size to meet the city's needs. And so it's not a science, it's somewhat of an art in figuring out that balance. 20, in our conversations with HCD, was a number they felt was large enough to have a reasonable chance of a shelter opening, and thus complying with the requirements for by-right approval. And 30 would be a larger shelter type. And between the 20 and 30, with the 161 identified need and the sites that are available, with those criteria, it would meet the city's obligations under state law. With that said, the city council could establish a different threshold, as long as it was higher than the 20 and 30 thresholds that have been established. HCD, to my knowledge, would not have a concern with allowing larger shelters. They may have a concern with allowing smaller shelters.
Okay.
I recall a lot of conversation around, and let me bring up the page number so I can get this right. Basically, the conversation is why H on packet page 115 is there. "The emergency shelter shall comply with applicable state and local uniform housing and building code requirements and state and federal laws, such as biological resources, paleontological resources, wetlands, hazardous material storage and disposal, and other resources as required." And I remember the conversation being something to the tune of, well, largely, there's a mitigation plan in place for at least, you know, the developments that come before the commission. Should there be something stating to which, and feel free to fill in Commissioner Wright if you'd like, or, but the conversation was somewhere along the lines of, well, everyone's required to do that anyway regardless. And the response to that was, can we at least put a thing in writing saying, "Please do that," so that it's somewhat more obviated. Hey, did I capture that conversation more or less accurately?
More or less, yes.
Okay. So just to put an exclamation mark on it, might it be appropriate to like, print a statement of acknowledgement on plans when they come through or something of that nature? Or would that be a bridge too far?
So I would say from my perspective, it's a fine line to walk, where we're putting clear operational standards consistent with state law, without crossing over a threshold where we're imposing a higher level of review or additional requirements on these operations that are not applied to other residential uses. So we don't currently have a generally applicable, "Put all of these things on your plans that you won't, you know, harm biological resources or paleontological resources for single-family residential projects," for example, which are roughly of the scale of a type of shelter you might expect under this ordinance. So we've tried as staff to keep away from crossing that line, and keeping some space in daylight, if you will, between us and our ordinance and where that line is. This statement that you will require, or comply with those state and federal laws in the ordinance, doesn't place any burden on the operator to do anything particularly other than read it perhaps at some point and understand they have some obligations. To then require them to begin putting things on plans, or, you know, attesting to certain criteria, we would have to look carefully at each of those potential options.
And just to extend it a step or two further, if we were to change MPC down the road so that even residences would have to print a statement of acknowledgement on their plans, would that translate over into developments such as these as well?
I think it possibly could, and that would perhaps be a stronger basis to apply a requirement that would apply to residential uses as well as to emergency shelter uses. But again, we would need to look specifically at what those requirements are and compare them to the law in effect at that time.
And, you know, there's currently, you know, desire by the state and HCD- And, you know, there's currently, you know, desire by the state, and HCD in particular, to make these emergency shelters really ministerial, and not to discourage their development. So it's really important that the city not add any additional conditions or requirements that are different than what we do normally. And to your point, could we come back and put this in there if we are treating all the other applications the same? Perhaps, but I'll tell you, I am concerned with how HCD would view that additional condition, because what staff has done in terms of putting additional verbiage in there related to state and federal law, they're already legally obligated to comply with that. So, but they would not be legally obligated to comply with acknowledgements, right? So that's a distinction that I think is important to remember. That is really why staff is limiting the number of conditions that are being imposed. So anytime the council member says, could we add this, you know, I'm sitting up, because I have to go through the analysis to say, is that a law? Is that a law, you know, with the city? Or is it a law with the city that we could impose upon all? And then the question is, what is the value of imposing that on all to make it a law? Right? So we wouldn't want the legislative history to indicate that we were trying to impose additional conditions for emergency shelters different than others. Even if the council determines that emergency shelters present unique and impactful, you know, impacts essentially, the state has made a policy determination on your behalf that regardless of whatever additional impacts could be associated with emergency shelters, regardless of the impacts, they should be allowed. So we need to get it, any additional conditions need to be tied, in my opinion, to other state or federal laws to be, you know, if you were to say, you know, put a condition in there to comply with, you know, I can't even think of a state law that would, you know, apply in this circumstance, but that wouldn't be an issue. But if you're asking us to create new obligations, not anywhere in state or federal law, I would have concerns with that.
And I, the way I took the conversation at Planning Commission, what I'm trying to kind of just solidify to the extent appropriate, is that there is acknowledgement of state and federal.
Yes.
And that's, I think, the point of just having it written on the plan. I think the concern of the commissioners at the time was merely to make sure that, when they're developing it, they are aware of what state and federal law is. And I had the feeling that that was where the concern was stemming from. And so it's good to make it as explicit as possible. I'm not suggesting, you know, going down a sequer road, I'm just suggesting that it's acknowledged that these are state and federal.
And I think that that is good direction, right? That's good, that's good practice, that's a best practice. But I would say that your staff would be able to address that without requiring a formal acknowledgement, right? When they are processing these applications, they will make sure that that is occurring.
And frankly, the extended question gets into whether or not it might be appropriate to actually do that with residences at some point, because I think that was a natural extension of where that conversation was going. And so even if, for example, it doesn't wind up circling back to mean we put these on the plans for these particular uses, I think that it would be a valuable conversation later for any regular use, because it seems like it might turn out to be a best practice that was dug up because of this conversation. So that's where that was going. The other question I had revolved around packet page 135, and I think last night when I was reading this bit about, as part of implementing zoning changes to permit emergency shelters without discretion, the city should address compliance with parking standards pursuant to Government Code Section 65583, subdivision A4A, and additional requirements regarding zoning capacity and habitability pursuant to Chapter 654 Statutes of 2022 AB The question that came out of that were, are we worried about parking, given the ultimate commission recommendation? Because it seemed like there was conversation around parking, and I thought I followed that fine, and then I read that, and I was not sure if it jibed with that particular paragraph, so I just wanted to confirm that we're good on the parking front. In other words, by specifically stating what the parking expectation is, that we're not harming ourselves, much in reverse of the conversation we just had with City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick. The ordinance does include a limitation on parking, or a number of parking spaces for emergency shelters. So it is similar or consistent with the off-street and parking and loading ordinance of our code. So I, sorry, let me pull up the ordinance section. The parking requirement is one parking space per volunteer or visitor, which is consistent with any other residential uses, parking standards for other residential uses in the parking ordinance.
And so it's part and parcel with what HCD would want for this ordinance to be, yeah?
That's correct. So it would be considered aligned with what the state would require.
Okay. And all of this is to say, we've been working with HCD to make sure that we clearly understand what they're asking for and that we're delivering it, correct?
We believe the ordinance that's been prepared by staff and advanced by the Planning Commission aligns with what the requirements of state law will be, and will not run afoul of HCD's review. That said, we've provided the draft ordinance to HCD and have not received comments back. Interpret that as you may, they're too busy, or they don't object to it, I can't say for sure. But we've made all diligent efforts that we can to coordinate with them in advance, to get their guidance on what the ordinance should contain, and to craft that ordinance in alignment with that guidance.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions before we go to public comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Just one more. I've heard that sometimes our community center is used as an emergency shelter. Does that fit under this definition also? If there's a, I mean, the definition included disasters and so forth as well?
To my knowledge, the community center is not used as an emergency shelter. I believe it's used as an emergency reception center, to provide very short-term gathering place for people that may have been displaced before they can be advanced to an actual emergency shelter or other accommodations.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. You good, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. So in that case, let's go to public comment. I have one card from Chris Redfield. I have no other cards. If someone wishes to fill one out, it'll be brought up. I'll call on you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Chris Redfield. Good evening, staff and council. I just want to say I want to support the addition of Article 53 to the zoning regulations of the Pacifica Municipal Code. Planning and staff, planning staff and the commissioners have done their due diligence in the research of possible sites and compliance with current state law. Along with the update to existing texts and other, regarding other types of facilities and additional zoning amendments, will only further our compliance to current state law. Lacking good reason not to approve, and given our condensed timeline, I look forward to a unanimous yes vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards at this time. I see that Suzanne Moore has her hand raised. Please state your name for the record after you unmute. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
Thanks, Tiger. Suzanne Moore from the Manor District. And thank you city staff and Planning Commission for providing guidance on required zoning for emergency shelters. This zoning is required by law and can benefit neighbors in our community in need of emergency resources for shelter. It's obviously a difficult topic, because previous commissions and councils have not addressed it, and have been negligent in our procrastination. Many Pacificans were displaced from their hometown because these services were not available. It's truly important at this time to recall that over half of our homeless were previously housed in Pacifica and were priced out of their homes, that many of our unhoused are veterans, seniors, and the disabled, and that the economic downturn of COVID has put the most stress on lowest-paid and those in fixed income. Evictions city and county-wide have increased. Pacifica has been divided in its approach to reduce displacement in our community. Our safe parking program demonstrates how that division resulted in some members of the community breaking the law and harassing and vandalizing property of participants in the program. I believe to successfully help our neighbors, we need to address our prejudice of poverty. I want us to look around, to look beyond our fears in protection of our immediate space and envision a Pacifica without homelessness, with housing at all levels of affordability, and in an environment that protects our fragile ecosystem. I believe this is possible, but an important pathway there is interim and supportive housing. Interim or temporary housing until permit housing is available, and supportive housing for those unable to live independently. I'm not sure if I understand the C2 district and why in the coastal zone it should be excluded from consideration. It seems like there may be spaces especially appropriate for temporary or interim shelters, and the city and government-owned properties could be leased until coastal situations change. I'm interested in further listening to neighbors have to say tonight, and thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you very much. Not seeing anyone else on the Zoom list, Emily. And I don't have any further cards, so if no one's popping up, I will close the public hearing at this point, and bring it back to council for any further questions and deliberation. Councilmember Beer.
I think for starters, maybe we can address Suzanne Moore's question, because I think that's come up. But before we do that, I really wanted to thank the Planning Commission and staff. I did watch the meeting. You left me with no questions. You were as thorough as you possibly could be, which is what you always are. I don't know if the public understands how hard our Planning Commission works and how thorough they are. And if you haven't, you should watch one of their meetings. And I honestly didn't realize what a big lift this was going to be, Director Murdoch, and I know that that is probably what happens to you all the time. And so as I was reading the staff report, I was overcome by that, and just feeling very grateful.
Councilmember Beckmeyer. Oh, wait, so...
That was my question as well.
Okay.
The issue of C2 in the coastal zone.
Sure. Thank you for the question. So the emergency shelter ordinance would include C2 zone sites in the coastal zone. So I think there's a misunderstanding of something. I think perhaps it's stemming from the action the Planning Commission took to exclude CR, commercial recreation zone sites, which the way our zoning is structured, have the same allowable uses as the C2 zone. And so the Planning Commission's recommendation was to not allow emergency shelters in the CR zone, as well as the professional office or O-zone. Both of those rely on the allowable permitted and conditional uses of the C2 zoning district. So those were carved out. C2, even in the coastal zone, remains, subject to the forthcoming LCP amendment, or Local Coastal Program Amendment, with the Coastal Commission.
Part of my concern is that none of the sites in the 18 are city property, and I know we have very little city property, but that's typically where these tend to be built, right? More than private property. I guess that's why I'm asking about the community center, which I believe is M1 zoning? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. I would have to consult the zoning map, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, okay. Yeah, anyway, so if we as a city wanted to create something on that land or another parcel we own that wasn't in the C2, we could still, it just would not be, it would not, it would be a discretionary process at that point, or?
Well, as this ordinance is structured, to construct an emergency shelter outside of the C2 zone would require a zoning amendment, to change the zoning to allow an emergency shelter in a different zoning district, one or more additional districts beyond C2.
Okay. Okay, so it's not impossible, it's just, that's just another hurdle for us if we wanted to do that on our...
Right, it would just be a different ordinance. The staff identified C2 as meeting the requirements of state law and advancing that within the boundaries of a variety of considerations and available zoning districts. Certainly, emergency shelters could be allowed in more zoning districts, that's just a policy choice for the council.
Okay. And I'm just, I've heard bits and pieces about maybe adding showers to the community center, for example. Again, there could be a time, I'm thinking 1982, where a lot of people were, you know, had to be evacuated from their homes, and it would sure be nice if we had a city facility that could accommodate something, right? Even if it's not the full, the full services.
Right, and I would suggest, in the event of a major regional emergency, the city council has other tools available to it to rise to the occasion and provide for those needs. This is not intended for that type of situation. And so this is a more sort of steady-state, you know, community-wide need of long-term unhoused, in many cases, and the shelter capacity that those individuals need.
Okay. And then just to the number limits, I want to come back to again. So, you know, I can understand the limits, if you're thinking about a shelter in terms of a room with a number of beds in it, that you don't want things to get so large. But looking at the navigation center as, you know, a prime example of what this kind of interim shelter and housing could be, where there are individual units, so you're reducing the barriers, you know, people that are couples, people that have dogs, people that have belongings to store, you know, the one in Redwood City has 240 units. And all of my discussions with nonprofit housing developers, not shelter developers, but, you know, similar types of small unit housing, is that, you know, a lot of them need 70 to 100 units to have a project that's financially viable. There's a few that can go to 40 or 50. And so my concern is if we're limiting it to 20 or 30, we may not be able to get the shelter beds on a decent-sized project to meet our need, which is 161 beds, really. So, you know, if at all possible, I'd really like to change those numbers and reduce that And then also, just as a follow-up, the limited terms of stay also, the six months, is that something that's coming from HCD, or that's something that we're proposing? Because again, what I'm hearing in the navigation center is, you know, it's an average of about nine months. And this is with, you know, this is the type of facility that would have full services to get people back on their feet and into permanent housing, which is the ultimate goal, right? It's not just a temporary place, and then you're back on the street again.
So it's a policy choice for the council, whether or not to increase the number. You know, 20 or 30 is a number that HCD, in our conversations with them, would comply with the requirements of state law, but there's no reason that the council couldn't allow more, if that was the council's policy decision. Related to the stays, we cannot limit the stays to less than six months, but again, the council could extend the stays. But that could, at some point, change the nature of it being an emergency shelter into some other longer-term housing type, and the idea is to get in, get sheltered, get services, and get into permanent housing. Beyond six months, you know, begins to get closer and closer to a longer-term housing situation rather than an emergency shelter situation.
City Attorney, did you want to add?
Oh, thank you. Yes, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarification on there's supportive housing. housing, which is usually, you know, created by cities as transitional housing. That is not the purpose of these emergency shelter ordinances. Supportive housing, which is along the lines of what you are discussing, usually are instigated by the cities themselves. And in that process, there's grant funding that is associated with it. You're working closely with the state. I have a jurisdiction that has just recently done this, which is why I'm familiar with it. And everything is done, there's zoning changes, there's code amendments, there's, you know, grant funding, it, it's all a package. And you wouldn't want to use emergency shelters, which is different than supportive housing, right? Emergency shelters are really for temporary shelter, not for a, you know, declaration of emergency, you know, earthquake, fire. It, it, it's for, you know, some type of organization to provide emergency shelter for people who, because getting into supportive housing takes a very long time because there are, you know, processes that they have to follow, there are regulations, there are, you know, rules that they have to, you know, meet and comply with before they can even get into supportive housing. It doesn't, it, it's not as quick as an emergency shelter would allow. So I, I think it's important to look at this as just another tool. Supportive housing can still happen in the city of Pacifica, but usually supportive housing, 200 units, you know, of the, of the size that you're talking about, is a collaborative effort between the city, the state, and, you know, other property owners, if needed, in order to provide the, the land, the property. So I, I don't want you to think that the city will be precluded from addressing more, in a more thorough manner, transitional or supportive housing. This will not prevent that, but this, really, this ordinance was drafted in the manner that it was, as, you know, Planning Director has, and, you know, Ms. Harushka has indicated, because of HCD's requirement that we adopt this ordinance in order to get our housing element certified. So the focus here, as, as you can see, yes, it was a monumental lift by planning staff to put this together in the short time that they did. It wasn't intended to address all of the transitional or supporting housing needs of the city, and, and it doesn't preclude that either, so...
What you're describing reminds me very much of the Project Room Key funding that has been going on through the state, which I...
Yes, that, and that is what, actually, what we, what hit, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
And I know that several years ago, the county absolutely was looking at various hotels in Pacifica to figure out the viability, as they continue to look at hotels all around San Mateo County and have those discussions accordingly.
And it would not be surprising that if a supportive housing opportunity came to the city, that it would require zoning code amendments, you know, perhaps even general plan amendments. And, you know, you'll recall, for those of you that have, you know, engaged with other development projects that have gone through, it's quite common for development projects to come through with an application along with a zoning amendment or a general plan amendment. It doesn't prohibit the processing of the application. In the same fashion, this ordinance would never prohibit the city from looking into, exploring, and even citing more in-depth supportive or transitional housing. That usually requires, you know, grant funding because of the expense.
Councilmember Beer, had you wanted to add to this, or did you have something different?
Yeah, I want to add to it. So I mean, I think it would be great to up the number of, of beds. I'm perfectly happy to support that idea. I also clearly understand the difference between the emergency shelters and the interim housing, only because I'm experiencing that right now with some family member, and so there's, the Navigation Center is like, it's beautiful, right? And if we could have something like a Navigation Center, it would be awesome. It takes a lot of money and a lot of resources, and there's a ton of, of wraparound services there, so many, way more than there are at Coast House. Okay, so then you have different levels, right, of emergency housing? And so if we can get something where we can get folks off the street and then get them into the interim housing, then that's a win. And then, you know, we're not talking about like programmatic details here. We just want to make sure that we're able to build, right? So, thank you for that.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just want to make sure we're not limiting so that we, we can get built what we need. And I, what's tripping me up, I think, Michelle, to, to your point, is the, the definition on, on the bottom of packet page 105, because it mentions navigation centers. So emergency shelters, it says, "Emergency shelters would provide housing with minimal supportive services," and that's where the minimal I was asking about, "that is limited to occupancy of up to six months by persons who are homeless, victims of domestic violence, individuals and households may temporarily homeless due to natural disasters, or other persons requiring temporary housing," blah, blah, blah. And then it says, "Per AB 2339, it expands the definition to include other interim interventions such as a navigation center, bridge housing, and respite or recuperative care." So I, I guess that's where I'm, I'm seeing that this is broader than just an emergency shelter of, you know, bringing someone in from the storm.
But that's what this is allowing us to do by this definition in, that's in here. That allows us to do that.
And so I think the concern that Councilmember Bowles is expressing is if we cap it at 30...
Yeah, yeah.
Then, sure, we could have a navigation center, but if it's capped at 30, then what's the good of having done this work if that's where we're capping it?
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
And then a cap of six months if someone needs a little bit longer, right? If, if we're offering that.
Oh, yeah.
I, I really think it's important to remember that the supportive housing that Councilmember Bowles is referring to, in terms of larger, you know, 200 beds, that is supportive housing that usually is done through state grant funding. So this is something that usually comes from the city. It's initiated by the city, it, it essentially has to be. What this ordinance is focused on are private property owners and, you know, affordable housing groups who, who may want to develop this on their own. It isn't necessarily, you shouldn't expect that you're going to have, you know, private property owners or, or, you know, nonprofit organizations come in and want to build huge supportive housing. That usually comes from the city because it's, it's a, you know, it, it is a lot of resources, and it's complex, and it requires collaboration with the state, city, property owner, if there is be. So it, it does usually get initiated by a city. It doesn't necessarily come. So I want to emphasize that this ordinance would not preclude that. That is still possible. And, and, you know, this ordinance is really not designed to address true supportive housing and, and, you know, transitional housing. That is very in-depth in terms of programs, rules, regulations that need to be followed in order to get into the supportive housing versus what would be required to get into an emergency shelter of this nature. There, there really is different types of, and it's a big umbrella word, emergency shelter, right? Emergency means more than just immediate emergency. It, it, it means also transitional and supportive housing, but that isn't the focus of this particular ordinance.
So, did you want to...
I'm just curious about how, how big of a cap do you think, like 50 or?
That's what I was about to ask.
Yeah, but I don't know, or, or it relates to the size of the property, you know, I don't...
The biggest piece of land I think I saw that was vacant was about one and a half acres, is that right? Am I remembering that properly? 1.3?
Yes, that's correct. I believe it's 1.85 was the largest.
And, and you said 200 square feet per person, but, and then plus the parking?
Yeah, that's generally the acceptable amount, 200 square feet per person.
So, so the analysis, I think, if I remember right, was for a three-quarter of an acre site, and that was enough for the 30, right? So, so maybe if we have an acre and a half, we could go up to 60. We could say 50.
So 1 to 20 by right, and then 20 to 60 you're suggesting would be discretionary use?
Yeah. If that's so.
Councilmember Beer, do you?
I think I would also look at staff, too. I mean...
That's what I'm wondering. Excuse me, and I'm remembering the earlier comments about changing things and triggering extra looks or more in-depth back and forth from HCD. That's what I want to make sure we're not getting too far outside of our goal and objective here, which as a committee, a community member, so well-stated, there's been decades of procrastination, maybe not decades, a decade or-ish on this issue, and I think we need to get something approved. Obviously, this is sufficient, and I don't know if, if Planning Commission reviewed anything larger. I mean, I, I'm not sure I'm ready to just change things tonight.
We at the Planning Commission did not consider anything larger, and additionally, I'd like to add that staff took this on themselves. They do, we do have consultants helping us with HCD, but this was outside of that scope. So not only did they take on this extra burden, they also saved the city a bucket of money to try to make this possible. They have submitted to HCD, and this would change that submission.
But, but as staff had said previously, as long as we're meeting the minimum, which this only provides the minimum, right?
That's right. So I'll just say from a initial policy standpoint, we tried to understand what would the requirement be from HCD and had those conversations. We think this would meet the requirements, the 20 and 30 respective thresholds. As a policy matter, as is often the case, when the state has required the city to allow something by right, we have tried to do enough to comply with the law, but preserve as much local discretion as possible, at least in the beginning stages of a new ordinance, feel it out, see how it works, learn what works well, learn what doesn't work well. And if the council has an appetite to expand it later, then we can do that. I think a good example has been how the community has acclimated to the accessory dwelling unit requirements of state law. Initially, there were planning commissioners that said, "Let's just fight the state and, you know, sue them and see what happens," right? Taking away our local control. I don't know if there's anyone on the Planning Commission that would feel that way today or on the council, for example. If anything, how can we make more ADUs? How can we get more people in affordable housing, et cetera? So the appetite and the temperament can change over time. I think it was my judgment in figuring out where to set these initial thresholds to not go too far, to see if we can meet the requirements of state law, figure out how these work, determine if there is a desire or an appetite to expand them. If that appetite already exists, I'm not sure I have a feeling one way or the other. I think analogous to residential uses, it would be hard for me to come on my own and suggest allowing a 40 or 50-unit housing project by right without figuring out how the 20-unit housing project by right is working or not working. If we're not getting them, let's dial it up and come back and revisit. So it's from that standpoint that staff prepared the ordinance, but we're here to support where your level of comfort and appetite is for, for these types of uses.
I think I was on the Planning Commission when we were having those ADU discussions. And, you know, again, going back to our previous experience when the county was ardently seeking a place to expend Project Room Key funds in Pacifica, it strikes me that they were not able to find a facility that fit what they were quite looking for. And I feel like the other side of this equation is, do we have anyone knocking on our door to try to create a facility that's bigger than 30? Now, the point's not lost on me that, you know, you figure, well, if we create ordinance in a certain way, maybe they will knock on our door. I hear you, but I think that if there were someone who was interested in that, we could revisit that conversation and rezone and reconfigure, and as City Attorney, I think at length demonstrated, we have it in our capacity to change things if we find that there is somebody who truly has interest. In the meantime, in order to satisfy HCD, I do see the wisdom in retaining local control in the interim while we look about us to discover if anyone actually would have the interest of doing something larger than 30.
And for, Mayor Big Stick, if I may, regarding that, the politis, policy decision about the size thresholds, just to remind the council that while raising the threshold is good from one policy's perspective, it also has the implications of losing control over those larger projects and whatever the different losses of control are that Mr. Murdoch and Ms. Harushka could articulate, but you, you then have, you know, there's often concern whether it's related to parking or environmental reviews, we were talking about earlier, that, you know, folks from the neighborhood say, "Well, how can a, you know, a shelter of 50 be put here without complying with all that?" And we wouldn't, you know, we'd have less control of that.
Without any sequel review. Any other comments, questions, motions?
I move. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Do I need to read the whole thing? To make the motion?
No, you do not.
So, I move to, is this recommended action?
Yes.
Is where I am. I move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica to enact a new Article 53, emergency shelters, to amend Article 11, C2, Community Commercial District. Do I need to read all of it?
No, that's fine.
As stated in the agenda.
That's, that's fine.
Move. I moved.
And so before there's a sec, is it before there's a second that we can discuss?
No, first we see if there is a second and then we can discuss. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second is their discussion.
Yes. I mean, maybe we can just go up a little bit, just because.
Do you have a number in mind?
Well, not much, more than 30, like maybe 40, just because. Our community needs to see that, that we're serious about taking care of our, of our homeless folks, though. That's where I'm coming from. And if it's, if it's going to be a big giant, you know, deal, then maybe we shouldn't, but I just want to make sure that the community knows that we're here to support them, right?
So either an alternative motion could be made, or are you asking the maker of the motion to amend her motion? Is there any other discussion on the point?
Is, was there a second? I did not hear.
Married at second.
Then, then we need to vote on that motion unless there is a substitute motion or a motion to amend.
I said that.
I know. Sorry, I'm a little slow on the...
I'm, I'd like, as the maker of the motion, I'd like to acknowledge your suggestion, and I am not at this point prepared to amend the motion. I simply want us to get this piece of legislation, ordinance, language, whatever we need to do to get our project moved forward with HCD. That's my main focus and concern on this, and they seemed rather unhappy about the fact that it wasn't in there, especially having commented on it to us in the past in round five or whatever it was of RENA. So we are demonstrating that we're serious by doing this, and I feel concerned about stepping away from what Planning Commission reviewed and has put forward to us tonight.
Yeah, I understand that, too, and it was, it is really an opportunity for us to speak up, right? And say, "This is, this is what we care..." And say, this is, this is what we care about. We care about this issue immensely. And we'll continue to care about this issue immensely, and we'll continue to support our community any way we can.
Yeah. And I, I mean, again, just to say, a slight change and amendment, I don't, which I appreciate your, your compromise, maybe that's not too high a number, I think is something we can do today. HCD wants to see the 20 to 30 as a minimum. Adding another 10 doesn't necessarily change the HCD review process or, or where we are in our housing element. I would, I think it's important to show that we do have a commitment to our unhoused, that we have not done anything in a really long time to provide that. It's, and, you know, as, as City Attorney was saying, it's, it's the cities, cities often are the ones to start these projects. But also, I mean, the county actually has a commitment to functional zero homelessness, and they are working to buy properties and to build these shelters in cities that, that, that want to, to have those, you know, happen. We have a unique need here because we don't have the transportation, where if people are placed in other shelters down the coast or in other cities, they can't necessarily easily get to their jobs and their families and so forth in town. So, just adding another 10 would make me feel better. It, it also takes the discretionary process of view. They, 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 these tend to be controversial projects that no one wants in their backyard. So, the, the better a project that is viable, that could actually be built without having to go through the other step of, of discretionary review process would certainly make those easier to build. I, I'm not going to vote no if, if you don't, but I, I just feel strongly that it's, it's, it's a, it's a good compromise and show of solidarity to, to what's needed in town.
Planning Director.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I do also want to remind the council that the city will be undertaking a massive zoning exercise in the next one to two years to revisit significant portions of the zoning code as required as a program in the housing element. That is a time where we, we as staff expect to have to revisit this ordinance anyways because many of these areas might be rezoned to other zoning districts other than C2. And so, we'll be coming back to figure out what zoning districts remain appropriate for emergency shelters in light of that massive rezoning. And that's a time to come back and think, well, should we also modify the numbers? And so, it's in the not-too-distant future where this question, among many others, will be coming forward to the Planning Commission and the council anyways. That would give the staff more time to, to be deliberative and thoughtful, perhaps figure out if recalibrating those threshold, thresholds are appropriate, and be better prepared to offer you the policy trade-offs of doing the hard work now and increasing the permitted number, for example, so that we're not putting you in a predicament at a public hearing where people come out of the woodwork saying, we don't want a large emergency shelter next to our home or our child's school, or invoking CEQA as a, a method to obstruct the construction of an emergency shelter. So, there's a lot more to it than just the numbers, admittedly. And this will already, there's sort of a teed-up opportunity for the council to reconsider this in the next one to two years already.
Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please vote.
The motion made by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember Beer passes with a vote of four to zero.
Thank you very much. Council, do you want to trudge through to the end? Or would you like to take a break? Okay, so we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 9:45. Number 27 of the City Council meeting. We are up to item number seven. It's a consideration item. It is consideration and adoption of resolution approving the Second Amendment to Restated Employment Agreement between the City of Pacifica and Kevin Woodhouse as City Manager. Proposed action moved to adopt resolution approving the Second Amendment to restated employment agreement between the City of Pacifica and Kevin Woodhouse. So, I think it's a rare instance in which the subcommittee consisting of myself and Sue Beckmeyer gets to give the staff report?
The subcommittee report.
Subcommittee report. Okay, so I'm going to read a few things specifically, and then we'll elaborate a little bit, and we'll go from there. So, the city and city manager Kevin Woodhouse entered into an employment agreement in September of 2017. The city and city manager Woodhouse then entered into a restated employment agreement on December 13, 2021, providing for the terms and conditions of employment of Kevin Woodhouse. The council and the city manager then entered into a First Amendment to the restated employment agreement on November 28, 2022. In October and November of this year, the council held an annual performance review, which was facilitated by Dan Keen of Daniel Keen Consulting. Following the completion of the performance review, the city council authorized an ad hoc subcommittee consisting of Mayor Big Stick, that's me, and Councilmember Beckmeyer to work with the city manager and city attorney to negotiate amendments to the city manager's compensation and benefits. In the course of those discussions, the subcommittee reviewed a salary survey based on the comparator cities used in the city's most recent labor negotiations. The salary survey and a review of the city manager's significant accomplishments were used to evaluate the city manager's salary adjustment. The salary adjustment forms the basis of the Second Amendment to Restated Employment Agreement or Second Amendment. The Second, Second Amendment provides for the following modifications to salary and benefits for the city manager. One, effective the first pay period after October 9, 2023, a 14% increase in salary, which equates to an annual base salary of $304,939. And two, a modification to the city manager's employment health benefits to reflect the same health benefits provided to other department heads in the city.
Well, thank you for getting that part into the record. It was very important. I am not going to read the remaining page and a half verbatim, but simply wanted to make a comment, a few comments, that the mayor and I worked together on this, as he stated, with diligence, looking at deeply the comparator cities and knowing, as we do, all that's been accomplished in Pacifica over the last year, two years, three years, four years, five years, six years. And in recognition of the fact that in the past, while we would have sought, and we've always sought and continue to seek to bring all of our employees to at least approaching the median salary, the city manager has always been very understanding and acknowledging the situation the city is in financially. And we're now at a place, thank you, citizens of Pacifica, with measure Y and the work, the extreme work done by our assistant city manager on structuring an equity program within our compensation strategy. And it's a really important thing to recognize. And we made it a goal for our, you know, a big goal, prime goal for goal-setting this year is focus on our staff. I think the city manager has done an amazing job of holding things together, keeping everybody moving forward, and of really building an amazing executive team. And that helps the city continue to move forward. It's, you know, goes without saying, but I'll say it. He's not a one-person operation. So, you know, he is just the leader of all, of the operations that go on. And it's a big job. There's been a lot to contend with, and there will always be a lot to contend with in Pacifica due to our coastal nature. That's a little bit unique for us. But we have a lot of, you know, factors that go into making this a challenging city to run. And, you know, frankly, I would like to see it above median salary. At some point in time, we're not there yet. And this adjustment, if approved, would still have him below the median for the city managers in the comparator cities, the 12 cities that we looked at. So, I just feel it's really warranted. And that is why I brought forward with the mayor this recommendation to the council.
So, there's plenty I could say, and I think I'll save it for after public comment. And that's where I'm standing right now. Do either of you have any questions before we go to public comment?
I just have one clarifying question. As Councilmember Beckmeyer eloquently put, we've, we've really committed to all of our staff this year in labor negotiations and realizing that, you know, so everyone gets, you know, a certain cost of living increase and performance increase. But then the, the salary levels for the jobs that are really way below the parity, you know, for the same job in the county are, are important to try to raise up. And we're not able to raise them as much as we can. But for those that are lower, we've been raising them a little bit more. And, and this is so important because we are losing staff, right? It's very easy for our staff to find jobs in other cities that can pay more and that honestly require less of them. I remember hearing, you know, Public Works, I'm not asking my question. I'm talking too much, but.
It's occurring to me when the question arises. It sounds a lot like deliberation since you're asking the question of us.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, for Public Works, you know, a, a normal Public Works engineer would be managing three projects where here we have to do 10. And, and the city manager manages so much. So, the, the question I had was, so if I remember right, so we're, we're proposing a 14% increase this year. But some of the other increases that we've made to other positions, I think were, were seven this year and seven next year. So, it's, it's not like we're, we're doing something that's out of alignment with the general policies that we, we have set for other employees also. Is that, is that correct? Is that correct? There's my question.
Yes.
More or less, that is correct. And I can hear the arguments of others percolating in my brain, but I'm going to stop myself from going there and make various statements afterward to address some of the concerns that, but yes, is the short answer.
Yeah.
Which is a huge accomplishment, I might just say. Is that deliberation? I'm just saying it. It's a fact.
Right, and that's a part of where I'll be going with it.
And that's the goal. And I'm glad to see us getting there. And I better stop talking before.
Yeah, let's cut a public comment.
Let's cut a public comment.
Okay. So, I have no cards in front of me. I do see a hand raised from Brent Turner. You're welcome to unmute. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have two minutes left.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Brent Turner. I'm speaking on this item because I do not support the unjust reward of the people's money to Mr. Woodhouse, and certainly not all at once. This appears to be a reward for what the public might understand as bad behavior on behalf, behalf of the city manager. And unfortunately, I, I guess I will mention that I reached out to the city manager on several occasions and left multiple message, messages for him, and I still have never received a return call. And I'm just wondering how many other constituents are still waiting for a call. I, I came before you previous, and for over a year, this particular city manager stonewalled a vital project to this community, and you all valiantly stepped up and demonstrated leadership, and you voted down his direction, five to zero. So, I am not understanding how longevity and tenure gets rewarded here. The, the accomplishments that are listed appear to be within the normal course of business or staff assignments. And I don't believe they provide a, a solid basis for this reward. A Pacifica, in my opinion, should not afford this compensation. And the comparables that create evidence of the median may be appropriately reconsidered at this time. A Pacifica has one of the lowest tax.
One minute.
Among the comparable cities in the county. And if nothing else, perhaps you could consider breaking this reward up into segments over time. And that way, you can eventually base it on, on performance. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. I see no other hands raised. Ah, I see a hand raised in the public. Mr. Chris Redfield.
Good evening again, staff, council. I don't have a script in front of me. I think I wrote one a little earlier to you all. As, as someone who has worked, I think, the past five years in my capacity as a, you know, as a leader and supervisor and all that good stuff, for, for definitely not receive the compensation. I can totally relate to that. In this case, I really am outstanding. Every time I've had interactions with Mr. Woodhouse, response has been forthcoming rapidly, answered the questions. We've disagreed on some things occasionally. I think that, that is good, good form, actually. So, I cannot believe, you know, Mr. Mr. Woodhouse, I don't think does it for the pay. It's the same reason I go to work every day. I don't do it for the pay. I do it because I love what I do. I think that shows. So, as far as the accomplishments, I've seen the list. I think number six and number seven had some subcategories in there with accomplishments in there. But to do the things in Pacifica, if you've lived here long enough, I think we all know what the challenges are. They are immense. They are ever ongoing. They are always a challenge. I don't care, the simplest thing never turns into the simple thing. And the list of accomplishments over since, I think, 2017, I believe, was the higher date. The finances have gone, we've seen that level out, increase. The economic development has, has come forth. The vision for Paul Meadow out here, so many different major projects have come, and that's through you guys. He works for you. And, but I said, as I said earlier, he works for the City of Pacifica. He works for all Pacificas. So, I wish we could do it, I think, to median level, but that's not going to happen right now, as was spoken on. But I think this is more, more than justified to get done. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I see no one else in the audience jumping up. And I don't see any other hands raised in Zoom. I will close public comment at this time and bring it back to council. So, Councilmember Bowles, to answer your question more fully and robustly.
I gave a one-word answer. Please do go ahead.
You know, I, I think to the point that a commenter made that perhaps it could be broken up, and that was something we absolutely considered, which would not get him closer to the median that we're trying to get him closer to, as, by the way, we are trying to get all of our city employees to. And by giving him this bump, we actually are going to be able to incrementally get closer through those other incremental changes going forward, I think. And heaven knows this won't be the last time we'll have this conversation. But that's the impression is if we were to break it up, things fall farther behind, rather get closer ahead. So, that was one. Two, every other city employee experiences. Um, two, every other city employee experience has a measure of job security that Mr. Woodhouse does not, frankly. And as we're looking at these things, um, you know, one is, well, if we were to hire a new city manager, for example, it would be a heck of a lot more than what's being asked for, right? Another thing is when Kevin first came on, he was a brand-new city manager. This was his first proper city management gig. We got him at a steal. And over the course of the last six years, while he has continuously been the lowest-paid city manager, at least in the compensation surveys we've been looking at, not only that, there have been moments where out of deference to how far behind our staff is and how much we would wish to pay our staff what they're worth, he has asked for extraordinarily modest, um, pay raises. So out of six years, for example, two of those years, he only asked for a 2% pay raise. Out of deference to the fact that we weren't able to pay our staff what we wanted to pay them. Um, in fact, of matter is, I think, around this time last year, I said something to the effect of, well, if we can't figure out how to pay our staff next year, I don't know how I can vote for a pay raise for you next year either. And so since then, the development has been Measure Y. And while, um, a lot of people put a heck of a lot of work into that, the firefighters, for example, who I think placed a, a door, um, thing on every single doorknob in town and did a yeoman's job of taking us across the finish line. Well, Measure Y would not be on the ballot to begin with if not for the good foresight of our city manager, which in turn enabled us to actually figure out a way to pay our city, or to be able to get our city employer, employees closer to what we would actually want to pay them. In point of fact, this first year, $1.5 million has been allocated to those pay raises. I think another million on top of that will be allocated next year. And while we're able to do that in one foul swoop, the way we, um, adjust to Kevin is a little different since, again, he doesn't quite have the same level of stability and job security in terms of the nature of his job. So, you know, given how far behind ultimately he chose to keep himself, while we tried to figure out a way to do everything we could to, you know, hopefully keep our staff happy to the point of them coming, coming back to their jobs, I feel like now, after him spending a great deal of time, not really asking for much of a pay raise, that he's trying to bump up to kind of catch up, you know, below 9% of median. I think that even though it's, uh, right now rather than over two years, it's proper to allow that in order to get him closer so that then when incremental requests come down the pike later, we are getting closer rather than continuously further away.
And Christine, you, you had asked about the, um, the 7% and 7%, right? And Tiger, can you explain that a little bit? Just, I think our, our community's been asking about that too, like, does that make sense? If, can you, can you just explain it a little bit more so our community hears us? Or, I'm asking you just because you're on the subcommittee.
Yeah, I, I know that there's a, um, particular formula, which is not coming quickly to my mind. Um, I think there's an equity adjustment on top of a 4%. Um, that was across the board, Sue, are you happy?
Yeah, um, basically what happened is, as we've said in so many times and so many venues, um, our staff are behind other staffs in the, in the county. And I, I liken it to a lot of other things that are sort of deferred maintenance in Pacifica. Um, we just have always been a very, um, non-wealthy community. It, there's lots of reasons why that's so. Uh, but the result of it is the amount of money the city has to operate and do all of the functions it needs to do is just not enough to keep pace often with all the rising costs. And so investing in staff, the, um, the approach now is to really look, because it's not completely across the board, every single job is in the same state. Some positions, so you mentioned firefighters, that is one we really need to look at.
Yeah.
And we've needed to look at it for a long time. And we're looking at it and we're working on it. And so the approach that was brought forward, and again, it, it goes to the financial knowledge and awareness to be able to come forward with a proposal like the one we're working on, which is a base increase. And then depending on where your position falls in terms of how far away from median you are, then there would be an equity increase as well. And so those two together form the basis. So in some cases, it would be more than other cases. But that's because we need to get these positions moved up, as we were saying before. It's a multi-year strategy. It's something that our staff has worked really hard to craft and working with the labor partners, you know, all eight of them, different bargaining units. It's a big lift and they've done a fantastic job. And to me, this is because of Kevin's leadership. And so while some may not see it that way, I absolutely see it that way. I think that the city's able to run on less staff than it probably, it needs to have. It's because Kevin has developed a staff that works hard, not just for the money, right? Works hard because of the work, works hard because of the commitment. And he's, if the environment here is one that people want to stay in. And so I, you know, eventually, and, and we do have losses, there are times where people have to really evaluate for their, their own career, their own family, depending on where they are in their career ladder and such, and make a move. We've seen it happen. If we're lucky, and we are in a couple of instances, one of which was announced tonight, we get them back. But sometimes we don't, you know? And it's really all about developing the staff that we have and helping them to move forward. That's vision, and that is what Kevin has brought.
To answer your question, I think it was 4% base plus a cost of living adjustment plus an equity adjustment.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Thank you for using the language that I just couldn't get off my, tip of my tongue.
Yep.
Um, but I did want to say a few things, um, about Kevin because I think he is well-respected across the county. Um, not just our county, probably others as well, um, as a city manager. And we know that there are other jobs out there. Other city manager positions pay way more. I mean, just over, our little neighbors, right? In Daly City are paying a heck of a lot more, okay? Um, so it would be easy, um, for him to find a position somewhere else. And I think with the knowledge, the patience, the transparency, and the, I'll say patience again, because Kevin, you have had to deal with all of us, right? We wouldn't find that anywhere else. So if we're going to try, if we were to try to hire another city manager, not only would we have to bump up the pay a lot, but we wouldn't have that historical knowledge. City managers don't stay this long. Look at our track record of city managers. And we need that now. We need that, that continuity and that, um, perseverance. We need that. And so I, I think that Kevin wholly deserves this. And I'm really glad we are talking about our, our other employees and, and the other bargaining units and things because we really are paying attention to that. And thank you, Sue, for saying the multi-year strategy because that is what we're working on. And I'm proud of that.
Me too.
And I, I think we've made, and I, a, a historical investment in our staff, and they deserve it.
Yep.
And I think that Kevin does too.
Because city managers serve specifically at the will of council, unlike any other employee, apparently they have an average lifespan of about two years.
Yeah. No, I think it's a little longer.
Well, no, apparently because every two years, that's when councils turn over. And then depending on the council and their relationship with their city manager, in other places, quite often, that really is the lifespan of a city manager. Councilmember Bowles?
Um, and, and I, I mean, I agree with everything you all are saying. And, and I've really appreciated getting to know Kevin this year. I maybe, I, I, I hear Brent, and I had my frustrations before too. It's, he's got a busy schedule. Um, um, he doesn't always have time for, for everything we would like him to do either. Um, I, I, I object to, to the term reward for a salary. A salary is for co, just compensation for the good work that you're doing. This isn't a reward. This, this is a normal transaction for the wonderful services that you're bringing. Um, and, and something Michelle, um, uh, city attorney, um, said a few weeks ago, um, I don't know if everyone knows, she, she is the city attorney for five different cities. And, and the last year, four of those cities have lost their city managers. And, um, yeah, just think of the turmoil of that. You know, all the, the ongoing projects that we have going that really do need that continuity. Um, the Vision 2025, which is Kevin's, um, baby that, that is really trying to bring us to a place of financial stability for the long term. Um, and the Measure Y is just a part of that. But there's a lot more coming, and the marketing strategies and so forth. And so it's, it's really critical that we don't just start over with someone else and, and lose this good talent, um, at this time.
I agree.
So I'm, I'm completely supportive.
I, I love hearing you, um, say the contrast between knowing Kevin and not really knowing Kevin, right? From before, so I appreciate that because I'm sure that folks do have frustrations. It's hard to, um, to get to know someone in a position like that. So I, I appreciate.
And, and what I was going to say too, and, and thanks for the reminder, is to, to Brent, reach out to us too because, you know, we can listen to your concerns and, and help evaluate and bring them to, um, the city manager or other, you know, others, to the right person, right? So.
And then just one more thing for me. The team that you've been able to put together, Kevin, the hires that you've brought in? I mean, look, just, just in the back, look at, look at, just those, the...
And the ones that aren't, aren't here tonight.
Uh, and, and the one we were able to keep.
And part of the reason we're able to keep them is because of the culture that Kevin has instituted in which they all feel safe to be here.
Yeah.
Last year's evaluation, we got to find out that piece of it when we were wondering, well, what does staff think about you? Because we're not sure what that looks like on that level. And resoundingly, it was, yeah, staff feels supported. And if we don't have a staff that feels supported, why would they stick around? Apparently it's not for the pay, even though we try our best.
Right.
I love that you brought that up. I forgot about that. We did ask that.
Yeah, the 360.
Yeah. It's cool.
Yeah, I know it is. I mean, I just, I have to say, um, you know, as my one-fifth of, you know, your supervisory position, I'm very satisfied with what you're doing. And I know it's going to be challenging. I, you know, we're going to keep having hard work to do. It's not over, as you well know. Um, but I think to keep moving forward, and that's been sort of my mantra all along since I was moved on, came to sit in these seats along with Mary in 2018. There's been, um, a lot of things got deferred for a long time. And there's reasons, you know, I understand. But to move our city forward and to keep it resilient for the future, the hard work had to happen. We needed a general plan done. We needed a Shaw Park specific plan. Our previous councils did work toward those things, but it didn't get over the finish line. And it needed to, and there's more to come that, you know, we just have to keep moving forward. And this is what we have with our city manager and the leadership team that we have. And we're very grateful for all of you and your leadership.
You know, I am acutely aware at this point that you're acutely aware at this point that you could get more money somewhere else.
Shh.
Yeah, I know. And at first, that was my mentality when we started having this discussion. And at this point, I feel like it should be stated out in the open because I know blessed well that you know that. And therefore, there must be something more to it than that, or else you would have ran away screaming a long time ago. Um, you went from being the youngest city manager, period, because you were brand-new to it, to being one of, uh, the more seasoned with a particular jurisdiction. And here you are still. The institutional knowledge you possess is extraordinary. That in and of itself is invaluable. You are able to explain to me sometimes, some of the comments I hear from out there that I, you know, sometimes it's a long night and I hear that one person saying it in a tone that I'm like, really? And I miss some of the point. And then the next day, I'm talking to you about it. And you're like, yeah, well, I understand why that person had that feeling attached to it because what they were trying to say was, and I was like, oh, you actually cared enough to hear that? I wanted to care enough to hear it, and I tried to with all my being, and you actually caught it and then brought it back to me in a way that I could hear it. That is invaluable. And so playing this game where we are trying like, holy heck, to bring everybody up to where they belong to be, which is not easy because, you know, one substantial raise is $1.5 million, apparently. That's hard. And it's hard for us to figure out how to harmonize our budget against what we wish to give our staff. And at this point, you know, bringing you up to where maybe you would have been if you hadn't put off your own pay for a third of the time you've been with us, that's due diligence, trying to show any form of respect. And after that, for the price tag, you know, we're still getting a deal on the money. And thank you for deciding to stick with us because you have gotten that much over the finish line. Because you do care about the staff, about us, about our community and each member of it. And again, the staff whom you cultivate as a family rather than as a business. Thank you for your leadership. I know blessed well that it's a team that supports you, that you can lead us. But I also know that they would not be able to if you were not leading us. It's reciprocal. It's mutual. It's symbiotic in the best way possible. So I am going to take the luxury of moving to adopt the resolution approving the Second Amendment to the restated employment agreement between the City of Pacifica and Kevin Woodhouse.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. If there is no further discussion, please vote.
The motion made by Mayor Big Stick, and I believe the second was Councilmember Beckmeyer. Um, the vote passes four, sorry? Four to zero unanimously with, uh, Mayor Protem Bader-Less's absent.
And Mayor Big Stick, if I can take just a brief moment, make a, a brief comment.
Please do.
Uh, a lot of, uh, the kind words that you, you provided um, really resonate with me. And so I just want to express my gratitude for being able to continue to serve as Pacifica's city manager. And for your confidence in the quality of the job that I'm doing. That means a ton to me. Running a city, as you've all noted, is an incredible team effort from the hard work of the council members to an incredible executive team and every staff, staff member of every department. In addition to all the commission and committee volunteers and engaged members of the community. This all works together to successfully run a city and to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. And for that, it's my honor and privilege to continue to work on the many exciting priorities and the day-to-day services that the City of Pacifica is undertaking. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one thing, Kevin, I also want to thank you for uplifting your staff because you've provided them opportunities. Look what Yulia is doing, right? She just came back. Is she back? Well, but you've given, you've uplifted them so that they can have opportunities like the one that Assistant City Manager Carter's experiencing right now. Those things are really important.
So before we adjourn, as we are going to be adjourning in the memory of Don Horsley, I wanted to take a moment to share any stories that spring to mind as on occasion we are wont to do. Any memorances? I know I have a couple that I'll share.
I'd like to start. Don was very supportive. He's the, probably the biggest cheerleader for our new library that I can think of. And I know this because I was serving in the leadership of the Library Foundation, and as we moved closer to defining what our needs are as a community, he supported our efforts. He gave us funding, county-level funding, to help pay for, again, we're back to what do we have funds for, right? To pay for our architectural studies and renderings, to help us reach out to the community and get their needs, you know, identified better, and it was just a high priority for him. He cared a lot about libraries and about kids and about learning. He was one of the big lift, lifters in the county. And it doesn't surprise me when I think about his career starting here after he finished, you know, being a, going to getting a teaching credential at San Francisco State and tried that for a little bit, not very long, he started here in our Pacifica Police Department. And it wasn't long, but it was important, and the relationships were built at that time that served us many years into the future as he moved into the Sheriff's Department and then up in through supervisory, you know, governance. But when you think about how much you know, when you learn, when you're at those levels of leadership in law enforcement, you understand the investment in education and the investment in people's worth and value and knowledge is what's going to pay dividends in the future. And there are many, many studies that point this out. So he tried to enact and did enact in our county and in this city what would help move all of the citizens forward. And I'm super grateful to him for that vision and leadership and his support because I didn't know what I was doing. I didn't have the first thought of ever running for council. It was just, we need to get Don Horsley on board. No, we didn't. He was already on board, and he supported us as we moved forward. So I'll be forever grateful to him for that.
Well, I'll go ahead. I started to say earlier that he, he really guided me when I first got elected. I sat on the HOPE inter-agency council with him, and I, I really thought, you know, by being a council member, that we could like solve the housing crisis. And, you know, he basically let me know, like, easy, Miss Beer, because we can only do a little at a time. But in order to do a little at a time, we have to continue to show up. And so he didn't like say, you'll never be able to solve the housing crisis. He just said, take it step by step, and you can do that by serving on these types of boards. And I was really appreciative of, of how kind and stern he was with me. I just found him to be really humble and very sweet, and I think that the leadership that he showed us all, it's taught us all something in a different way. I will really miss him. And I loved his, his relationship with Chris Hunter. I liked watching it grow over the years, and so I'm sure it's been really hard for you, Chris, and so my heart is also with you and with Don's family.
Yes. I have to say, unfortunately, Don stepped down from the supervisor role just as I got elected, so I didn't get to work with him. But I looked him up a little bit today. Fifty years of public service from 1972 to 2022. That's incredible. I'm just, I'm just getting over through year one, and it's hard. I can't imagine fifty years. That takes a certain kind of a person. And so I'm just going to read something from, that Jackie Spear wrote. She said, "He made an enormous difference over decades on behalf of the people of San Mateo County. People knew Don as an honest and earnest advocate for his perspective, which typically began with a concern about persons on limited income or those struggling from mental illness." Yeah, he didn't, he wasn't, he didn't start at the top. He started from the bottom. What can we do to lift people up?
Just in case, I'm going to take the unusual step of asking city manager if you have any stories around Don Horsley that you feel like sharing.
I don't have any specific stories or anecdotes, but I too got to know Don from being, actually, I did meet Don the first time because when I was at the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, we had a community advisory committee which was assembled of representatives from around the county related to the bond measure that they were considering and the, and the vision plan they were considering. Don was on that committee, and I had met him, and then, you know, a year, year or two later, I was here, and I got to know him better as well as got to know Chris Hunter really well. And I think the one thing I would say about Don is he was just very honest and straight-shooter about, you know, what we were trying to do. I mean, I, I met with him on numerous different issues and, you know, loans from the county for potential library or the civic center and what have you, and just his, his honesty and transparency, I think, is a value that, that everyone really valued, and it carried him a long way in his fifty years of public service.
I got to be there at his very large retirement party that was held at the fairgrounds, and I am almost inclined to go into other people's stories because they were so moving of who he was. But my experience is that I'm reflecting on the sentiment from the Tao Te Ching of Lao Tzu that the highest good is like water. And I come back to this notion that kind of what you alluded to, Mary, you show up, and then over time, something can happen. It doesn't happen overnight. And Don's presence was very much, had the softness and yet the persistence and power of water. I remember his voice as being somewhat soft, which to me was counterintuitive as someone who began in Pacifica as a beat cop and ultimately went on to become county sheriff. The stereotype in my mind is that that's somebody who would be in some way gruff and commanding, and he was neither of those things. Rather, his voice was unstereotypically soft to my ear. You know, I said, hey, Don, will you support me for council? I sent an email. One line came back, sure, no problem. But it was a moment at the Sanchez Adobe when it was opening, or the little addendum to it, the museum space. And he took it upon himself to walk up to me, and he said, hey, I just want you to know that this is the job apparently you're doing, and you're doing it because of the way you seem to be connecting with your community. And he just, you know, I'm not going to verbatim, but he took a moment to, to let me know that he thought I was doing good, and it meant the world. I went from this place of being new to just showing up to try and be a half-decent citizen where his voice was one of empowering me, even though I felt like I had little to offer, to one in which he went out of his way to let me know that he felt like my voice might actually be helpful in some way. And he was an extraordinarily gentle soul in that way, who spent his life trying to make things better for all of us. So, Don, you're going to be missed, and thank you for a half a century of working on our And may something beautiful have opened up to you and brought you to it, and may there you reside. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.